Sorry for the delay of the start of the meeting. This is the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, May 23. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce that there was an executive session preceding this meeting where we discuss legal matters. And I will open the meeting by inviting the League of Women Voters of Radnor to present Civic Participation Award for 2020 and 2021 presented to Radnor Township employees and Radnor Fire Company. Is there a Commissioner who's leading this? Hi, there we go.
Good evening. I'm Julianne Norris-Santo. Can you hear me?
I'm not sure. Is your mic on or get it a little closer? We're checking on the technology.
I'll just speak normally. Can you hear me?
We can, they can't, so you can just give it a second. I can do it this way.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Can you hear me? That better? All right. Not used to it. Okay. Yes, as I said, I'm Julianne Norris-Santo, President of the League of Women Voters of Radnor Township. The League is a nonpartisan organization of women and men dedicated to voter education and to good government at all levels. It was founded in 1920 and has been, we've played a role in civic life in the township for more than five decades. Each year, the League recognizes an individual or an organization for its contribution to the civic life of the township, of the community. Reflecting on the two years of the COVID-19 pandemic before vaccinations were available, we decided to honor the township employees who carried out their responsibilities despite great difficulties. We know how hard it was for them to balance family and work and at the same time keep themselves and their loved ones safe. The certificate we're presenting, the League is presenting, reads as follows. These workers are known for their dedication and hard work regardless of the circumstances. These past two years have shown us that they went well above and beyond during some unique challenges. This team epitomizes the term professional. You have our deepest gratitude and appreciation granted by the Board of Directors, April 2022, and that was for the years 20 and 21. And this is the plaque. I read you the text of it, and this is for the township. Now, I would like to name the departments, the township departments, and their representatives. And these are the departments, our employees, who did so well during those two very, very difficult years, which we hope have come to an end, as I said, 2020 and 2021. I read the list of departments and representatives, and would you please stand when I read your names so that we can applaud you at the end. For Administration, Bill White. Community Development, Kevin Kojanski. Engineering, Steve Norsini. Finance, Bob Tate. Parks and Recreation, Tammy Cullen. The Police Department, Police Chief Flanagan. And Sergeant Chris Buck. Public Works, Ricky Foster Jr. The Radnor Fire Company, Joe McGuire. So. And I'll give it for safekeeping. And the mic. Show you some of it while others perhaps need it.
Thank you so much.
Madam President, if I could, just real quick, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much for the honor. In addition to the folks that you recognize tonight, we have about 150 employees that all did their part every single day within all those departments. So it's absolutely a team effort. We had great leadership from the Police Department and then all the way down to the department heads. So I appreciate the honor and appreciate the work that all of the township employees did every single day, and of course, the support of the Commissioners that had to make some tough decisions over that time span, too. So, thank you.
So I will open the meeting with public participation. Before the first person comes up to speak, I would like to just sort of explain how the meeting is run, will be run, and that might affect your choice about when you'd like to come speak. We know that there is an item on the agenda that has brought many of you out. We've moved it to early in the agenda so that we can hear from you. So you can come speak now about any issue, including the item, what's the number? However, you will have an opportunity when we discuss that item or any other on the agenda, there's public comment built into each item that we'll be voting on. So you're free to come and speak to us now, or if you'd like to hold your comments to when the issue you are here to address comes up, we will entertain public comment at that same time.
Hey, good evening. So just jump ahead of 3C. So this, I'm here to speak about the zoning ordinance. So I live at 104 Buckingham Drive in Radnor Township and am here in support of the zoning ordinance. So I am one of many homes that would benefit from moving this forward. Currently had a project to, you know, capture our garage and make it into a living space. The garage is unusable for parking. You know, nine of the 14 homes on my block have already completed this, and so people are parking in the front yard, not front yard, in the driveway in front of the home already. And so I think this would just accurately reflect reality of the situation. So we're not changing the footprint of the home, and so really not an imposition at all. So again, I hope that this moves forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? I'm not seeing any. I'm going to move to the consent, yep, come on in.
So anyhow, Madam President, Dan Sherry, Wayne, I think what you meant to say is you can speak at the start of the meeting on an agenda topic as well as during the Agenda Topics' public comment section. It's not an either-or, it's both. That's what you meant to say, I'm sure, as well as also at the end of the meeting, if the person so chooses, which is 15 minutes, if the person is so inclined. I'd like to talk about this particular topic that somebody has seen fit to put on this agenda tonight, and the allocation of time in that regard, I think, is important, given the allocation of time this board and by extension, law enforcement in Radnor Township may be taking upon itself if this ordinance, which is being introduced tonight thereafter, becomes local law. I'd like to start my comments by stating that I believe the topic associated with this proposed ordinance is extremely serious and is accordingly deserving of seriousness. Talking about and thereafter legislating an issue that has been law in the United States for approximately a half a century first requires an understanding of what that law means, the law that has thereafter interpreted it, and the ordinance, an interesting term of art is used, in terms of progeny, and thereafter what the sides to the debate are seeking. As I understand it, with Roe v. Wade, the individuals that have an interest in it fall into basically three groups. Those that believe that the federal government should be providing a certain minimal level of access to abortion services. Individuals who believe that the federal government should be restricting or prohibiting access to those services. And a third group that believes that this is a states' rights issue. I've yet to hear any serious discussion that this topic should be reserved to the local level, and that includes the most pro-choice adherents and the most anti-abortion adherents. So when I saw this, which is apparently predicated upon a draft U.S. Supreme Court opinion, hasn't been published yet, is potentially still subject to revision, but nevertheless seeks to direct Radnor Township law enforcement to disregard apparently forthcoming federal law or apparently forthcoming Pennsylvania Commonwealth law, I was very surprised. Not only at the lack of seriousness, but the lack of actually soliciting expert opinions. Nobody on this board has any expertise in constitutional law. None of you do. One of you purports to have experience in appellate law, but as we saw a couple weeks ago, this individual can't even figure out an ice skating ordinance. So why not have individuals in here if you really think that you can address Roe v. Wade on a local level? And incidentally, if a majority of this board thinks that you should, I'm not sure if National Abortion Rights Group would agree with that. That is fraught with peril. The idea that somehow some townships in Pennsylvania would be not adhering to federal and state law where others can, that opens up Pandora's Box in terms of what types of laws you're going to follow. Why you wouldn't have experts in this discreet field in here to talk with you, whether it's women's health advocates, or doctors, or constitutional law professors, or individuals who've spent decades litigating this topic to talk with you about, A, whether you can do it, or B, whether that is actually going to follow some type of viewpoint that this, I see your finger, that this board actually has an agenda in following. There are probably thousands of different approaches you all can do to address concerns of your constituents insofar as this draft Alito opinion is concerned. That can be having town hall meetings, calling up state legislators. By the way, Mr. Borowski, good job in terms of your primary. Bringing in experts in the field rather than taking on a concept that locally you can address federal and state law. There is yet to be a law professor or attorney who is good at creating and runarounds law that hasn't even gone into effect yet. There's a reason why we wait and actually understand the opinion and what is going to be the law before we decide that maybe we can address it at the local level.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. I look forward to your next comment.
So while I would be interested in hearing later tonight, thank you, just let me, just 10 seconds, thanks. Just 10 seconds, thanks.
Your time is up.
Please, I would appreciate it if you would just give me the discretion to say that. Yeah, I know that, we're just going to talk back and forth. I would appreciate tonight if you actually provide the motivation for why this is there and why you think now would be the time to address it. Be back in a little bit. Thanks.
I would like to take this moment while you're coming to the podium. Thank you. We have a five-minute limit for comments. I will raise a finger when you're one minute to go, and then I will verbally say your time is up. I would hope that everybody will help us keep this as quickly moving as we can. So thank you. You have five minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I have a much lighter question. I'm hoping we can have pedestrian benches on the trail again. I understood some time ago they were taken out because trees had unfortunately fallen and killed residents, but some of us are older and like to have a seat. Sometimes they're pretty far apart, and it's a great way to build relationships and teamwork and community, and I'm not so young anymore. So I wondered if we might rethink if we can please have some benches on the trail.
Thank you for your suggestion. Is there additional public comment at this point? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on any items on the consent agenda, number two on the agenda? I'm not seeing any. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a Commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'll remove letter F and H.
Anyone else?
Well, I was going to remove number H, a letter H as well.
Okay, thank you. So we will move to item 2F, firefighter stipend pursuant to Resolution 2021-112 in the amount of $28,000. Mr. White or Mr. Tate, would you like to address this?
We're actually going to ask our Assistant Finance Director, Amy Lacy, to lead us in on this.
Yes, this is pursuant to the resolution that was passed in December, allowing $1,000 stipend to each eligible firefighter that met the criteria listed in that resolution. So before you is the amount of money based on the list that we received from the two fire companies.
Thank you. Is there any Commissioner comment?
Yeah, so my only comment is, and Ms. Lacy, it's just firefighters, correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, I thought the thought was to attract volunteers for first responders. So that could be firefighters, it could be EMS. So I would like to amend this resolution and include EMS as well as firefighters.
So in the original ordinance, and I don't have, it's been in front of me, we had passed an ordinance regarding firefighters only. So if there is a move to amend that ordinance, Solicitor, can you talk to me about the process of bringing this back around?
The original resolution just addressed firefighters. So that's what's in front of the board tonight. Commissioner Abel wants to, there's nothing to amend in terms of that, and the decision now is just the funding of it. So you would have to have another resolution specifying, other than firefighters, you know, other first responders, EMS, et cetera, paralleling what's been done for the firefighters.
Which can be done at the next meeting?
Yes. It would essentially be the same resolution, you know, for the, I guess we would have to get some numbers and which organizations are we talking about, because we have in this particular resolution both Radnor Fire and Bryn Mawr. But I thought there were, I think there's some other fire companies that are eligible, but maybe no members are eligible, is what I'm guessing would happen. But we need that list, and it could come back at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other comment on item F? So is there, may I get a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, it's passed unanimously. Moving on to item 2H, Resolution 2022-65, Authorization to Award Contract B 22005, Tree Removal Pruning and Stump Grinding to Joseph McElvein Tree and Lawn in the Amount of $142,500.
So my question is, and I want to thank the staff, we have talked a little bit about this, but I don't know if Mr. Foster or Mr. Norsini wants to address. We did have a lower bid, I believe, about $40,000 lower according to the packet. So I'm just wondering if you can explain why we ended up going, usually we go with a lower bid, if you could explain why we're going with the next highest bid.
Yes, I will explain that, Commissioner. The bids that we received, they came in on May 12th, they were all submitted. The lowest bidder, they were actually missing some documents. So that is why we weren't allowed to take that bid that they put in. With each bid, there's requirements that have to be submitted, and there's documents that have to be submitted. So there was a security bond that was not submitted in a timely fashion. So the time cutoff was 10:00 a.m. on May 12th, and if it comes in at 10:01, we can't accept it. And if there's anything I forget, Mr. Norsini can jump in.
So Mr. Foster is right. I mean, there are requirements, these are sealed bids. All the requirements are posted on PennBid, that's the e-bidding site that we use. Our bid package, which was created by Melissa Khan, has a checklist with it. So there's a host of documents that has to get uploaded along with your bid by the time, it's time locked. At 10 o'clock, it's locked, you cannot submit. So you will see that actually on the Valley Stream/Robin Hood Road project, it's the same situation, the lowest responsive bidder is the number two bidder.
Thank you. Commissioner Abel, do you have a comment on this?
Yeah, appreciate that. Mr. Foster, can you just walk through the, or provide a list of the trees that will be removed? Or locations?
Okay. You want all 140?
Well, I assume there are going to be bunches of parks.
Okay, I can give them to you. Here's the breakdown. I have 80 on the Radnor Bike Trail, I have 23 on Harris Lane Trail, I have another 22 on Eithon Valley Park, I have another nine at Ditmar Park, and then there's six at various locations, right-of-way locations. And I believe that is the total, which brings me to about 140.
Is the First Baptist Cemetery included in that?
It is, it is in there. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, it's part of the count, I didn't have it on there. But yeah, there's another seven at that location.
Okay, appreciate it. And Bill, to the comment, to the woman in the, in public comment who asked about the benches, now that we're removing 80 trees, does it make it more likely that we can get benches back on the trail?
Well, I, I guess maybe a more general way of answering that is the better the township's tree management program is, the less liability we would carry in a situation where the worst should happen or someone were to be injured. So as we improve our tree management program, I think that improves our ability to mix pedestrians and trees even when they're sitting still, which is...
Which we do every day. So hopefully, this is an easy decision, and we can have an update soon.
Yes, sir.
Any other comment on this item? Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Moving on to the rest of the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and G. May I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the business agenda, the first item, item A, is the appointment of a deputy tax collector. Mr. Treasurer, can you lead us in on this?
Well, this is to have somebody who can take over and do the job when I'm on vacation or if I become infirm, but whenever I'm out, and we are fortunate that we have somebody who's excellently qualified for the job and who has done it before, who is an employee.
Bob, do you want to speak to our candidate? Speak about our candidate?
Thank you, Madam President, happy to. Yes, our Assistant Finance Director, Ms. Amy Lacy, has been with the township for 25? 23 years, and in her capacity, has worked in a number of departments, and for a long time has been in finance, and is really the, probably the foremost knowledgeable person in the revenue collection process. And a big, a big, big part of that process is the real estate taxes. So Amy certainly would be the most qualified, most capable, and the single person who I would also agree to nominate as the, for the deputy position.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Is there Commissioner comment, Mr. Farkey?
Just a couple questions. Ken, you're elected, as we know, so you live in Radnor Township. Amy, or John, or Bill, does she need to live in Radnor Township? And is there a potential conflict of interest because she is currently working as a township employee?
I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. One of the reasons that you need this position filled even when the tax season is over, if any of you have refinanced your homes, or any of you have sold your homes, there needs to be a tax certification done. And the tax certification basically confirms that there are no tax liens, there are no old taxes that are, that haven't been paid on the property, and banks won't go to, won't issue a mortgage, and real estate deals won't close unless you have that, and you really don't want that to be dependent on my being there at the particular time that a house is sold or that the closing's taking place.
All right, so that sounds, now we're in the business of being a settlement office as well. So just, again, those are my questions, and then does that add liability if, on the township end, if Amy is doing, because this is an elected position. So those are my questions.
Just a point of clarification. So it is in the Pennsylvania state law that oversees the treasurer or tax collector, and in it, it is their right and their duty to appoint a deputy. So it comes from the original law.
Sure, and that deputy can be anywhere in the state or anywhere in the country?
There's no residency requirement.
Okay, that's my question. And then it doesn't add an extra layer of, doesn't add an extra layer of liability that she works for the township?
Yeah, there's no extra layer of liability added, and the functions that the treasurer identified are the normal functions that that position does all the time. So the list of duties that were described, none of this is new. Identifying Amy as the, as the deputy, yeah.
If the answer is it's not a problem, then that's what I want to hear.
No, in fact, it, I mean, Mr. Tate, explain, it ensures that in the treasurer's absence, we have an expert here helping the residents.
I don't disagree, I just want to make sure, because we had an issue with the last treasurer, and a deputy, and that's all I want. All right, thanks.
Are there any other questions from Commissioners? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor for the appointment of Amy Lacy as the deputy tax collector, please say aye. Congratulations. Item 3B, Discussion and Direction on Comprehensive Link Camera Systems.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to table this item until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And, you know that this is an issue of great importance to many people in the room, and we want to hear from all of you.
Aye.
Thank you. I do recognize this is an issue of great importance to many of you in the room, and we do want to hear from all of you. I am going to start with allowing our commissioners to make a statement, and to try to keep some order in how we're addressing this, we will be moving through our statements based on our ward number, so Ward 1 through Ward 7 will allow us each to have time, I ask my commissioners to be respectful, and, you know, keep, keep an eye on, on time, we have a lot of people here, once we've done that, I will open it to public comment, again, as I said in the beginning, you have the opportunity to speak on this issue, we keep it to five minutes, I will let you know when you have a minute left, and I will let you know when your time is up. So, I will move this to Commissioner Larkin, who is the Commissioner for the first ward.
Okay, I guess since I drew the short straw, and I'm going first, I can provide some of the background, and I can give a little bit of information about where I stand on the issue. As I think probably everybody here is aware, the Supreme Court of the United States has, well, Justice Alito has authored an opinion which has potentially been joined by four other justices, that draft opinion has been leaked to the public, and many of you have read it, or certainly have heard information about it. The upshot with respect to that draft decision is that if ultimately adopted by the court, it would overturn Roe v. Wade and its progeny. There are senior members in both the national legislature and within state politics in Pennsylvania who have indicated their intent to pursue bans on abortion, including in instances that would challenge the health and life of the mother, in instances that would include rape and incest, and as a result, there is the real possibility that within the next, say, 18 months, we could see a ban which is enforceable in Radnor Township. The ordinance which is proposed today is a response to that potentiality, it does not decriminalize abortion, first off, we do not have the authority to do so, we cannot make laws that are in conflict with our state laws or the federal government. However, it is our obligation to fund our police department, we exercise with respect to our various administrative staff members, the police department and other employees in the township, the power of the purse. What this would do was, would, what this would do would be to preclude members of the police or any other township employee from using township resources, including their salaries, to effect an arrest, or otherwise investigate, prosecute, or penalize abortion as it is currently permitted in Pennsylvania today, which means you have up until 24 weeks, except in instances that involve a risk to the life or health of the mother. This would essentially freeze the right to abortion in Pennsylvania, here within Radnor Township, specifically with respect to enforcement. That's an important caveat to include, we have no ability to tell the county detectives that they cannot come and make an arrest if eventually a ban is put in place, we cannot tell the FBI that they do not have the authority to come and make an arrest if a ban is eventually put in place, we cannot tell the state police that they do not have the authority to make an arrest if a ban is eventually put in place. What we can do is, we can tell the residents of Radnor Township that we will not use their tax dollars, and that members of the township police department, wearing Radnor Township badges and in Radnor Township uniforms, will not effect arrests, which would be in violation of the Constitution as it stands today. If passed, this ordinance would have functionally no effect tomorrow, since of course, this remains a constitutional right, it would have no effect tomorrow because there is no ban in place. However, it would, in the event that Roe v. Wade is overturned, if Justice Alito's leaked decision is eventually adopted by a majority of the court, and if a ban goes into effect, either at the national level or the state level, this ordinance, this ordinance, as proposed, would prevent enforcement of such a ban at the township level. We, at the end of the year, will be called upon to pass a budget, we will be required to fund the township going into 2023, and one of the things that we will have to do is decide whether we will fund the police department, and of course, we will, we do every year, that's not really a material question for us, however, I want to do so, knowing that when we ask that question, what and how we will fund our police department and our other services, we will not need to be concerned that the taxpayer dollars that we spend to do so will be used to prosecute women who are seeking health care from their providers. I intend to vote yes on this issue, it is an absolute obligation in order to uphold my obligation, it is an absolute obligation in order to uphold my promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of Pennsylvania, there is no question about that in my mind. This has been the rule within the United States for the past 50 years, it is my hope that it will continue to be, however, if the court ultimately goes in a different direction, I will be voting in favor of this specifically, so that we can be assured that in Radnor Township, we will not be enforcing what is plainly a violation of a constitutional right to privacy, and to make appropriate health care decisions between a woman and her provider.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I remember very well when Roe was put in, I was a fairly young girl, 11, 12, but we now have generations of people who don't remember a time before Roe, their only experience with illegal abortion is a scene from Dirty Dancing, and I remember when rich women went to Sweden, or out of the country to get a safe abortion, and poor women dealt with pain, infections, and death, potentially, from an illegal abortion. I'm a physician, a pediatrician, have worked with newborns all of my career, and I find the idea appalling that we would go back to a two-tiered system. I realize we're not actually talking about, we're talking about Radnor Township and its Home Rule Charter, we can't do anything about Roe v. Wade, but what we can do is hold the purse strings, and we can say what our police can do and can't do financially, as Jack pointed out. Some people will say it's political, this is just a little political ploy, but I say we have to do what we can. The overturn of Roe v. Wade will endanger the well-being, and indeed, the lives of some of the women in Radnor, in Pennsylvania, and in the United States.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
So, no matter one's personal opinion on Roe v. Wade, it's hard, it's, you know, a very hard topic for us to be discussing, but I'm glad we're bringing it up now, and not if and when the situation arises, and I want to thank Commissioner Larkin for bringing this to our attention, and coming up with, you know, his version of how he can help to protect women in our town, but I've spoken to several people in our community that this ordinance would affect, including other women, lots of moms, like me, with daughters, doctors, our superintendent of police, and I've worked, I've struggled actually, to put my personal opinion aside, you know, you know, it, it's just, it's so difficult for me to fathom our police having to, you know, having to go after women and their health care provider over something that has not been an issue for 50 years, you know, this should be really a personal choice for women, I feel, because there are many nuanced reasons why a woman would have to choose something like this, I don't, you know, I don't think that everyone that goes out, that's put in this situation does this frivolously, but on the flip side of things, you know, I do believe that our police have to attend to 911 calls, no matter what the situation, and what if this ordinance would preclude them from investigating a criminal situation associated with a reproductive issue? There's a plethora of nuanced situations, as, like, like I said, as to why someone would seek an abortion, and different levels of criminality that could be associated in these nuanced situations, so I think that's important for us to consider. So, I just want to be cautious when it comes to the restrictions that we place on our police, therefore, right now, I won't be supporting this ordinance, but I remain open to discussing this ordinance, or tweaking it to protect pregnant women and their providers in our community, when the time arises, if the time arises.
Thank you. Commissioner Borowski?
Thank you, Commissioner Maloney. So, I have long been a proponent of Radnor using its voice to lead on issues that impact the well-being of not just our community, but the communities across the Commonwealth. Overturning Roe v. Wade will put state and local leaders on the front line to protect women's rights, that is exactly what it means, they're not going to set the law of the land any longer, they're going to let the states make that decision. Tonight, we are taking steps to protect a woman's right to choose, because we have to. This is a preemptive ordinance, which will help assure women continue to have the right to access needed health care services from providers of their choosing in Radnor Township. I've worked in health care myself for 30 years, I deeply value the doctor-patient relationship, and I don't believe that we should be putting our police in the middle of that relationship, between a woman and her health care provider. Township resources funded by our residents should not be used to interfere in those decisions, and those, again, are decisions to be made exclusively between a woman and her chosen health care provider. I will support this initiative this evening, Commissioner Jones, you do bring up some interesting points, and, but I believe that we need to take a stand, we need to be prepared and ready for what may come, and we need to keep our police out of these delicate situations.
Okay, it's my turn. With the uncertainty now surrounding our right to privacy, and the assurance of a person's right to access essential reproductive health care services, I am going to vote in support of this ordinance. If the leaked Supreme Court opinion is to be believed, and I believe that even if this is not the final version, it is similar to what we will see coming from the court, from the Supreme Court. If Roe v. Wade is overturned, we are going to see more infringements on our right to privacy beyond the access to safe abortions, and I don't say this with exaggeration, the right to use contraceptives, the right to marry who we want, these are all on the chopping block, if the Supreme Court does not have the respect for 50 years of precedent. What is very clear to me is that if Roe v. Wade is overturned, I know definitively that many states will ban access to abortion, they have told us so. The laws are already proposed in several states, the bills are teed up in anticipation of this court's action, the Republican candidate for Pennsylvania governor has stated that abortion is one of his top issues, and does not accept, does not support exceptions for rape, incest, or the life of the mother, he also thinks that doctors who, who perform abortions should be punished. We are one election away, away from extreme anti-choice laws going into effect in Pennsylvania. There will be state bans on access to abortion, and if we are listening to leaders in the federal government, there is a real possibility of a federal ban. This would be reversing well-established constitutional protection that has been the law of the land for my lifetime, we recognize that as local municipality, we do not have the authority to regulate abortion itself, that's not what this proposal is about. If passed, this ordinance will ensure that no Radnor Township taxpayer dollars will go toward investigation, arrest, or criminal charges of anyone who is receiving, providing, or supporting abortion services that are currently available to them in Pennsylvania today. This is not as extraordinary as I've heard some people say, in fact, the Delaware County District Attorney issued a statement on May 6th, and I quote, "As a prosecutor and the chief law enforcement official in Delaware County, I want to state clearly and unequivocally that I will not use the power of my office to criminalize a woman's personal health care decisions, and I can't agree more." This is a critical time in our nation, and it's imperative that we stand as a community to do all we can to safeguard the rights of our citizens, to make their own health care and family planning decisions with their doctors, without the interference of government. Today, we take a stand against the infringements of the rights of anyone with a uterus to choose when and how to become a parent, I will vote yes, and I am proud of my colleague commissioners who plan to join me in supporting this ordinance tonight. And Jake, you're up, Commissioner Abel.
Well, to those in the audience, and to those watching on TV, I appreciate you being engaged on this issue, I've been in politics at the national and local level for the last 20-plus years, and I summarize this issue tonight as political theater, and we're discussing this issue because a member of this board is running for state office. We're having this discussion so that a press release can be sent out first thing in the morning, saying that this board passed a ban on enforcing, or telling our, our police department not to enforce a law that hasn't even been decided yet. What will not be included in that press release is just that, that this is a discussion, this was a leaked press memo, and that nothing has been decided by the highest court in the land. What will not be included in that press release is that this board has thrown our, our police department directly in the middle of a political debate, making their job harder than it has to be. As we've seen over the last couple of years, being in the police, being in law enforcement is, is difficult, it's challenging, and we've made it that much tougher, telling them, follow our rules, or you get no funding, I, I think that's a disgrace. What will not be included in that press release is that this ordinance is a slippery slope, you know, what will this board decide next, you know, what, what, what new law will they not be able to enforce? And for those reasons, I will not be voting in support of this ordinance, or any ordinance that directs our, that cherry picks which laws our law enforcement should uphold, you know, if, if it's a law, if it's a law, you know, and let me flip that around, if it was a law that they didn't agree with, and a Republican-led board had issued a similar directive, they'd be up in arms, you know, our, our law enforcement should enforce all laws, and we shouldn't be cherry picking which ones they should enforce, and which ones they shouldn't.
Thank you. Commissioner Farkey?
Thanks. I have a lot to say. So, the, the first thing I'm going to say is, I am a Democrat, I am pro-choice, I have always been pro-choice, and I believe in activism. I am the most senior member of this board, meaning I've been here the longest, and in my four-plus years, I have seen a circus, political grandstanding, as much as I say that I don't want to be a part of it, I have been, but this just is so far above anything that we have seen. So, let's talk about a couple of the issues, and then I'll lead into why this is just ridiculous. I remember when I first stepped on, they switched the solicitor in the middle of an election cycle, and I remember, and the Republicans were lame ducks at the time, and I remember a press conference where a former commissioner, Matt Marshall, was saying, how am I going to tell my, my daughter about the switching of the solicitor? John, I, I've had many conversations with my kids, and I, your name has never come up. Then, the next election... Then, the next election cycle, the Republicans went after Elaine Paul Schaefer about Phil R. and all the bad things that he did. Here's the deal. If the Republicans wanted to go after Elaine Paul Schaefer about Phil R., they had two years to do it. You don't do it when someone is running for an election weeks before that election takes place in that election cycle. That is political, and that's really what everybody saw. And again, I hate talking politics. She won. Fortunately, the constituents saw that, and they saw this theater, and I hope that they see this theater again. A couple of years ago, Rich Booker brought this up with Penn Medicine having abortions, and he brought many pro-life members that were not residents of the township. I walked off the dais first. Moira, I think you walked off second, okay? And then that ended the quorum. But I wasn't going to put up with any of this grandstanding, both on the pro-life side or my belief, which is pro-choice, on this side. This is wrong, absolutely wrong for the community. We have elections, period. So instead of saying, "Well, we don't like the way the elections turn out," get out and vote. What are we doing here? We are talking here. We are making a meeting go longer than it should be. Thank goodness that we do not have our, we have our consultants here, which we pay $100, $200 an hour. John, we pay you $168 an hour to listen to this. Okay, $168 an hour to listen to this. And yeah, oh, well, he has a retainer. Sure, he has a retainer, but it's hours spent. This is a waste of our taxpayer dollars. So, these are the issues and questions that I have, and I got about 10 or 15 of them. Number one, Roe v. Wade has always been a concern. So why wasn't this brought up years ago? Okay? Jack, Moira, Lisa, we all stepped on, what, four years ago? Going on, what, three, four years ago? We had three or four years to bring this up. We didn't. Ruth Bader Ginsburg died, what, two years ago? Year and a half ago? That would have been a good time, because now the writing's on the wall, right? That this is going to happen. But we didn't. So when was this brought up? This hit the agenda the day after, let me say that again, the day after the Democratic or the Republican or the state primary, in the middle of an election cycle. It's absurd. If you're like, if you're not angry, you're not paying attention. And it doesn't matter what side of the issue that you're on. It matters the theater and what this does to our staff and ourself. Now, to what Commissioner Larkin said, and I saw the, I saw the news article that we were both on. So my first question is, you said that you had consensus, and that's fine, but having consensus and having consensus when we're not at a meeting, it kind of reeks a little bit like a sunshine ordinance. I don't think that you violated it. I think that you're too crafty and too smart to do that, but it just doesn't sound right. I'm sure that you had your four votes, and it sounds one, two, three, four, you have them, that you did, that you have them. So, I don't know, it just doesn't look good. So my question, my further question is, if you have the four votes, and you know that you have the four votes, why not have the solicitor draft it? Why are you drafting it? So if you have the four votes, have the solicitor draft it. I really think the reason why you're not doing this, because you know how overtly political this is and how bad this would look, that our taxpayer dollars are now directing the solicitor to draw up this type of legislation. And I am just shaking my head, my hands are in the air of really, I just, every layer I peel, I just see more and more. Now, to Commissioner Borowski, you in the past have said, "Stay in my lane" about a school board post. This is, ordinance is directly because of you. I mean, we all know that. The day after the leaked document, you're on your Radnor Commissioner page saying that it's, you posted something. So now you've made a national issue about abortion on your Commissioner page, but if I'm upset about the timing of when a rising kindergartner becomes a first grader, that's drawing the line too far. I get it. We get it. You're running for office, and that's how it's going to be. It's do what I, you know, do what I say, not what I do. All right. Jack, again, you were talking about how Philadelphia is, it must be legal because Philadelphia did this. Let's talk about our constitutional law. I don't know it. I don't think you're an expert. I know John Rice isn't an expert. Mr. Sherry brought that up. So I don't really want to emulate Philadelphia particularly. There's a lot of great with Philadelphia, but I don't want to emulate Philadelphia. So I don't want to say, "Hey, Philly, what are you doing?" It's just as bad when we say, "Hey, what's Laura Marion doing? What's TE doing? Let's think for ourselves," right? And not say, "Well, because Philadelphia did something, we can do it." I don't want to be part of Philadelphia. I don't want to put Radnor on the same levels, same level with the people like Bobby Heenan, Seth Williams, Malcolm Kenyatta, Leland Beloff, Chaka Fatah, and Frank Rizzo. I don't want my name associated with them. And I'm pretty sure that Philadelphia doesn't want their name associated with the likes of Phil R. and Bill Springer. But I think this is where we're headed. Again, so let's talk a little bit more about hypocrisy. I suggested a preemptive ordinance or whatever about having safe injection sites in Radnor. But then I was told, "No, we shouldn't do anything that's proactive because it's not illegal," or it's not legal. But here, this isn't illegal, but we're acting. Again, it's just more and more and more hypocrisy. But it's not the hypocrisy. That's fine. It's for the political function of getting somebody elected, and that's what bothers me the most. Now, what's a backup plan if Jack Stolzheimer, because we're hanging our hat on Jack Stolzheimer is not elected, or the governor, or there's a change in leadership that's unsuspected on the Democrat? Where is this board going, and who is this board, going to hold their hat to? It just seems that it's a little disorganized. So for now, Jack Stolzheimer, it's a great plan. And then when that plan fails, it's going to be Plan B and Plan C. It's, again, not to be political, but it kind of reminds me of like when we invaded Iraq and George W. Bush said, "Well, it's weapons of mass destruction." No, it's for oil. It's for free the Iraqi people. It's just going to change on and on and on. And that's what I think these people, these people here tonight, my constituents, many who have contacted me, they're sick of. They're sick of it. So who's going to bear any grunt of a lawsuit? And I'll talk that in a minute. Now, we're already short-staffed, and this is what we're focusing on. Not budgets, not the comprehensive plans, not the zoning issues, this. So anyone here tonight that has other business here and has to sit through this, I apologize. I apologize on behalf of my colleagues. Okay, I got to only have a couple more, so thank you, everybody. How does this affect the police, the police and my, my unqualified immunity? How will it affect it if I vote for it or if I don't vote for it? And that is a concern of mine. If we blatantly, blatantly violate the Constitution, where does that leave us with our qualified immunity? And that is a big, big, big decision on how I am going to vote tonight. Bill, have we contacted Bill White? Hey, Bill. I know that you don't want to look up, and I know that you don't want to be a part of this, but have we contacted our insurance companies to see if this will increase our premium? You don't need to answer it. Just know that that's a question that I'm going to have. Just a couple more. Okay. So, and the other, the last thing that kind of bothers me is this is political. Right here, we have George Beatty in the crowd. George Beatty put a newsletter or an email out on his newsletter saying to pack the house and to pack the seats, and to do it for Jack and to do it for Lisa. And that is political. That is using your office for a political purpose. Now, look, I am still a proud Democrat. I am very proud that I am not associated with the Radnor Democratic Committee anymore. Thank you, George. Thank you for throwing me out. I do greatly, I do greatly appreciate it. Thank you. You did me, you have done me a world of service, especially tonight, because I am embarrassed by all this. Because the Democrats and the party, what you're telling, you're telling everybody, like, "We're no better than Donald Trump." Like, hey, Donald Trump, rip up a subpoena if you don't like it. Well, just rip up the law on our stance if we don't like it either. So when you talk about, Jack, you talked, or they talked about, about how this is going to save, it's not going to cost the township money. That's wrong. This is penny-wise and pound-foolish. This will tax, cause the, cost the taxpayer money, especially in the township. What's this going to do to morale to the police force? Do we really want to be politicizing our police force? What happens if they're told to do something and they don't do it? We have another sworn police department in Radnor. That's Villanova University. So how does that work if they want to arrest somebody, a student that may have had an abortion at Penn Medicine, and they're arrested there? Technically, it's in Radnor. Is it under the Villanova jurisdiction? Probably, but it's also under Radnor. Is this really, really where we want to go? I mean, this is just, this reeks. Please, please, people, please, people at home, see that this is nothing more than a political stunt and a circus. So my vote tonight is not going to be yes, not an "I" vote, and it's not a "nay" vote either. I am pro-choice, and I would back, I probably would even consider back this if you did this the day that we were sworn in, or the day that Ruth Bader Ginsburg died. But to do it the day after a primary, it's ridiculous. So I'm not going to vote yes. I'm not going to vote no. I would like to abstain, but I really can't because I don't really see that I have any kind of conflict of interest. So I'm going to what's called no-voting. I'm just not going to vote. And my vote is a flat-out protest vote, and any Radnor staff that feels the same way as me and does not want to get political and is concerned about their qualified immunity, please feel free to contact me. I understand that you, like me, do not want to get involved in this, and I will not be voting for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you to all the commissioners for your statements. I'm going to move now to public comment. I reiterate that it is a five-minute time at the podium. We're hoping that we can hear from everybody, give everybody fair time, and... Thank you.
How you doing?
I appreciate that you-
Sorry, just one minute. If you can state your name and your address before you start.
Yes, my name is Ted Mann. I'm actually a Newtown Square resident. I'm right on the border, but I, I'm at 42 Rockwood Road. One of the questions that we should think about is, what is the law? Not what's written down, but what causes it to be written down. One, one way it can be written down is that you can say, "Well, the law is whatever I say it is. I have more votes than somebody else. We're going to just stick it to whoever we don't, that doesn't like it." And the other way is to try to get a law that is just, that is fair, that has the entire community interest in, at stake. A great thinker many years ago said that law is the integration of reason and morality that brings virtue to society. We can't have people running around killing each other, so we pass a law saying this is, it would be, bring virtue to society if we don't kill. If we, if we, if we make these subdivisions, which this township is, if a neighborhood association said, you know, "We know it's against the law in Radnor, but we're going to have animal sacrifice in our neighborhood," they probably in trouble. I think the point that one of the members made was that you're putting the police in a terrible position. A 911 call, an abortion goes bad, a woman is in serious trouble, the police aren't allowed to come and help. At what point is this process to be interrupted? You know, the taxpayers don't get a discount because you're changing the law in Radnor Township. They expect the full support of the law. We, a couple of the other points that had come up, the qualifications, you know, are you going to have qualifications for the people who are allowed to do abortions illegally? And what does, what kind of insurance does that require? These are, these are problems that you're bringing on yourselves. Will you have, will you say, "Well, partial birth abortion's okay for us. We know it's illegal everywhere else, but we'll make it legal here." These are things that haven't been thought out. Constitutional right to privacy. You can't find it in the Constitution. You will find life. I guess that's about all I have, but I appreciate you. And I also want to, you know, understanding that you people are all volunteers, that you've stepped forward to serve your community. I appreciate that, and I know you and I have differences, some of you, but I still appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the fact that you're thinking about this. Hopefully, you'll do a little bit more thinking before you decide something like this. Thank you.
Dan Sherry, again, Wayne. So I want to talk a little bit about a couple of comments that were made, but before I do that, I'd like to talk about Mr. Larkin's summary of that, which he apparently composed. It's not merely about prosecution pursuant to this ordinance. To the extent you all want to do some type of local reverse Hyde Amendment-type law, we can talk about the merits of that, but that's not what this is. It goes well beyond that. It says, "You can't also cooperate, and also you can't even participate," meaning that what? If a subpoena comes in, you're just supposed to ignore it? Commissioner Farhi made that point. Just rip it up? Don't spend any time with it? That's not how that works. If something comes in from another state, be it Oklahoma, Texas, something that locally, including the district attorney, we think is incorrect, we move to quash the subpoena. We cite Pennsylvania law or what we think is persuasive federal law. We don't say, "Spend no time on that. Nope, don't touch it." That's totally inappropriate, no matter what your views are in terms of Roe versus Wade. To you, Commissioner Jones, good points, good points being brought up tonight. To you, Commissioner Myers, never spoke to you before. You know this issue is serious, and as a result, you know that locally, that's not appropriate. We speak to expertise, individuals who actually have standing to make this law or challenge the law, the courts or the district attorney's office. I was shocked when I heard that people invoking the district attorney. That's his choice whether or not to prosecute. It shouldn't be this board's decision to decide what we're going to tell our local law enforcement not to pay attention to. Tell me what makes more sense. Radnor Township Police Force follows federal and state laws and does not take positions that are inconsistent with federal and state laws. Pretty hard to disagree with that. Conversely, ignore the laws we think are coming that we don't like is a problem. It's a problem if it was a firearms ordinance. We dealt with that more than 11 years ago when Operation Ceasefire came in. Jim Higgins hadn't gotten onto the Board of Commissioners at the time, but he made an argument, and I thought it was in good faith, even though I disagreed with it, I thought it was problematic, talking about how we need to have local laws in terms of firearms. That's a problem because Pennsylvania state law speaks to it, as does federal law. As a result, poof, it went up in smoke. Same thing here. Women's health and access to abortion is way too serious for the bread and butter issues that come before this board. I've heard countless times, Jack Larkin saying, "Not enough time, not enough time. We got to, you know, end this meeting," when we're talking about issues like drooping power lines that Jake Abel brings forward, or building heights that Commissioner Farhi takes forward. But nevertheless, you all think within the timeframe of 10 days, you can come up with law at a local level that is going to circumvent U.S. Supreme Court law that's forthcoming? How audacious is that? It's absurd. Wait till the law comes down. Bring in experts if you think you can address it at the local level. But again, I caution those of you that are fans of Roe v. Wade, which has been the law for 50 years. Who out there is thinking that reproductive rights should be legislated at the local level, within a county? Who's pressing for that? Pro-choice individuals? I've never heard that argument. That seems the antithesis of Roe versus Wade. That seems the antithesis of Roe versus Wade. It's national rights. Or, or if you believe certain constitutional people who align with the political right, it's a states' rights issue. Even in the introduction to your ordinance, you talk about federal law and state law. Yes, those are the entities that should be interested in this, and there are ways you can engage with them. Tell your solicitor to write an amicus brief, if that is the will of this board. Write to your state reps, including Lisa Borowski, if she is elected in November. Pition Casey and whoever it may be, the Republican primary's still ongoing in terms of the Senate. Do those types of things. But goodness, you know how easy it is to tell constituents, hey, look, I agree with you, but there's really nothing I can do about that topic? Or alternatively, you and I do not see eye to eye on this. But thankfully, it's moot, because that's not within our purview, nor should it be. We shouldn't take on this. Lastly, Commissioner Larkin talks about his oath. I seem to recall that when you're sworn in, you take oath to the U.S. Constitution, or at a minimum, Pennsylvania's Constitution. Those laws supersede Radnor Township. You can't legislate in a way that is incompatible with that, no matter how much you say, ah, this is not designed to conflict with federal or state law. Those are the types of arguments that Texas was making to uphold what has been called that bounty law that you all seem to be excised about. You can't cutely legislate your way out of this, and even if you thought that you could, you should only start doing that when the law goes into effect.
Thank you, your time is up.
Instead, what have you done?
Thank you, your time is up.
You've energized-
Thank you, your time is up.
Let me just, five seconds.
Thank you, your time is up.
Please, five seconds. You've energized people that are in opposition to this, and you probably also have upset people who now think that, who now think-
Your time is up.
Now, yeah, I'm in from the audience, who now think that you somehow have standard to do something that is clearly beyond your pen.
Mr. Sherry, your time is up. We have a lot of people waiting to say something. Thank you.
Thanks, be back later.
Look forward to it.
Margaret Giuliano, I live on Valley Forge Terrace, and Wayne, I'm in Mr. Abel's ward. I am pro-life, I have worked in the movement, and I've worked with women who've had abortions. In every case, it has ruined their lives. I don't only stand on a sidewalk and say, this is not a good choice. I walk with them when they choose life. I walk with them if they've chosen the abortion and can't live with themselves because they've destroyed life within them. I taught three-year-olds about life by planting a bean seed in a paper towel, and as soon as water touches that seed, they can see the root come out and life begin. When a human egg is fertilized, life begins. The bean didn't look like a bean plant, and we cried when they died. A human life, we don't have the right to determine, and to take, to take life because it's an inconvenience. An abortion is a quick and easy solution, it should not be politicized, but it's a slice-and-dice solution to a societal problem. These women need help, we need to be helping address the problems that got them into position where they feel so unsupported that that abortion is a choice that they have to make. Now, this being said, with specific regard to the law, I feel like in no circumstance should a policeman's right to uphold the law be connected to his paycheck or her paycheck. They work way too hard for that, they're there for us in every instance. This is a very political issue, it should not be something that they have to address. And I just feel like, I've never had a voice in this township, no, I, I don't feel like... It, it was not easy to find out even about this meeting. We were out of town when it hit the news, but it's very hard to find out when you want to talk about these issues. They're really important, there should be conversation. Women care about other women. I don't want any easy solutions. If every person in this room chose to walk with two people that are having a hard time, we wouldn't really be having to have a conversation about abortion, and about whether or not we should connect a policeman's salary to upholding, as has been said, a law that hasn't even been made. We need to care about each other. We can't even sit down and have a conversation anymore in this country when we don't agree with each other. Because, oh, if I'm a Democrat and you're a Republican, or I don't agree, or this or that, I mean, the conversation's over, or we're screaming at each other. It happens in my own family. I don't understand why this has become a situation in which we're using our government, our officers, people who, they care about us. I mean, the police come to our home when we're sick, or we're hurt, or something's wrong. Why should we restrict their ability to do anything that's in our best interest? And particularly when it comes to life and caring about other human beings, life is a really important issue, but it's not something that should be decided in politics. Yes, we should choose to support women, we should, in my opinion, we should always choose life, but if someone says they're a pro-life person and supports these laws, they should not be dismissed as not caring about women. We care to the point where we put our lives at risk, and our time, and our money, to walk with these people, and to have a law that doesn't offer them some protection what they might not even know they need, and, and to create a law that is based on something that hasn't even happened. I'd also like to address the rights to privacy. I don't think any other rights will be affected by that decision. This is a single issue, this should never have been politicized. I think women do need rights to privacy, but we all have rights to privacy and a right to speak, and I think those are important rights. I don't think anything else will be threatened. Okay, there was one more. Oh, in terms of special cases, which people like to talk about, I've always gone to pro-life physicians. It was never a question whose life would be saved if, if I got in trouble, and that was made clear upfront, in every single instance. And I specifically chose doctors who felt that way. The special cases are such a small instance, they're tragedies. It would be unconscionable to punish people who are in those situations. Most people in the pro-life movement would love to see them choose life, as Kathy Barnett's mother did, because her life does have value, whether you agree with her or not, as do everyone. Those aren't really, those shouldn't be the issues, and those become part of the politics of this issue. If you make an ordinance where our policemen cannot protect anybody-
Thank you, your time is up.
...based on money, I mean, their salaries based on their ability to do their job, I think that's really a wrong, a bad choice, and in this one in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Does anybody else wish to speak?
I'm Paul DeCamera from Upper Dublin Township, and I just want to thank you all for allowing me to get up and get some comments. I appreciate the, the opportunity to, to give some commentary. I don't think there's ever a right, or a constitutional right, never a right, to take someone's life. An innocent life has to be cherished at all times. I don't think abortion is ever an answer to a problem. Today, there seem to be so many supportive systems out there for mothers, whether it's maternity homes, adoption agencies, counseling services, financial services, there's all sorts of help for women these days that we have to think about, allowing a woman to take these, these children to term, because abortion just can never be an option. This ordinance really stands in direct opposition to God's law. And certainly, it's not a constitutional right. I think if anybody has a right, a right, it's the unborn child that has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I would think, you know, in passing this ordinance, and I think there were some really good comments made about why the rush to this thing, that eighteen months is probably earliest that anything could ever, ever happen to this thing, I just feel as if maybe we're rushing this thing a little too quickly. I think this ordinance has the ability, over time, to be in direct conflict with your state's law, and I think that's a real problem. I think it's bad politics, and I think it leads to a whole bunch of problems down the road type of thing. So, why not just leave this situation in the hands of democracy in the state of Pennsylvania, let the voters have their say on it? Seems to me like that would be, you know, what the Supreme Court is looking to do at this point. So, thank you, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you letting me make some comments about it. Thank you.
Is there any other comment?
My name is Peter Stahl, and I live on Windermere Avenue, and I am a resident of Radnor Township, but I'm also a resident of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I would tell you, my expectation is that the police in my community will support the laws of the state of Pennsylvania. That is my full expectation. To, to, I heard about this about an hour ago, this ordinance, and I'm trying to understand how it could even be possible that this board would, would, would somehow come up with this ordinance. And the only thing I'm hearing is that you feel you know better. You know better than the Supreme Court, you know better than the state, you know better than potential legislation that, that could be passed, and since you know better, you're going to control the purse string and, and put the police in the middle of this. I just, I hope you can hear the arrogance, the arrogance of that position, to say that you've got a political opinion on this issue, and your opinion is right, and everybody else is wrong, therefore, you're going to use the power as a commissioner to get the police right in the middle of it. That is so wrong, I just hope you would humble yourself and put the pause on this. This, this ordinance is bad today, but it would have been bad a month ago, it would have been bad right after Ginsburg passed away, it's bad at any time. That is not the position of the, of the commissioners in a township to get involved with this. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Claire Holroyd, I live in Brooklyn, I'm from Radnor Township. Very quickly, I just wanted to thank all of you for doing your jobs, very difficult. You guys are all very brave, and as a woman, I just wanted to thank you for considering the ordinance, whether or not you agree with it, I appreciate you considering something like this. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for a few minutes. My name's Dr. Robert Giuliano, I'm a retired PhD professor in chemistry, which I taught for approximately forty years. I'm going to read you something from a passage of Bernard Nathanson's book. Don't know if any of you are familiar with it, he was co-founder of NARAL, Pro-Choice America. He oversaw the, the performing of sixty thousand abortions, five thousand at his own hand, including his own child. He later became pro-life. This is a passage from his book called "The Hand of God." Thus, from the seeming chaos of early, rapid-fire cell division, and unimaginably precise deployment of these cells, to their designated posts, there's a vector of life, a direction and velocity of life, forces that are perfectly programmed, irresistibly logical, and immutably fixed in space and time. We must courageously face the fact, finally, that human life of a special order is being taken, and since the vast majority of pregnancies are carried successfully to term, abortion must be seen as the interruption of a process which would otherwise have produced a citizen of the world. Denial of this reality is the crassest kind of moral evasiveness. Since 1973, we know a lot more about life in the womb, and I would hope that the people that represent us and that make laws for us are going to see the morality that's involved with this issue. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sherry, I live on Lantoga Road, I have been a Radnor resident for thirty years now, and this is the first time I've actually come to a meeting instead of just watching it on television. I came tonight because this is a very important issue. I don't want grandstanding, but I have to say, you brought it up, but you also strut and fret your hour upon the stage. We expect professionalism, I think it's very important that we talk about this law. I'm adamantly pro-choice. I was, you know, at the age of nineteen, had an unexpected pregnancy. Abortion was not my choice, but I will forever fight for the right of women to make that choice, along with their partners, their family, and their medical providers. I don't know that right now is the time to discuss this law. I do support that the DA from Delaware County is not going to push this forward, and if that happens, I would expect the Radnor police to follow what the DA for Delaware County tells them to do. A few other issues. It's upsetting to see people who don't even live in our township coming here and taking up time. I think we should stop that, and they should not, their voices don't matter in our township, okay? It is a political issue, it's going to be forever. I'm tired of hearing people say, adoption, not abortion. I encourage them to give up their children, to total strangers. Take a look at the adoption laws in Pennsylvania that are horrible to the birth families who place a child, the marketing that goes into it, the attorneys who derive the money of private adoption in this state. It's, it's not what they think it is, is not the solution. So, we have to continue to try to fight, and I'd rather see Radnor Police Department spending their time going after fathers who have not paid child support, who have left their wives or their former wives, partners, and children. If you really care about the children, take care of that, make sure that there's a roof over their head and they are fed. We see too little of that on the other side. Most of all, listening here tonight and seeing how some pro-life groups all gathered and asked people to all show up to a township where they do not pay taxes or live, has made me realize, when I get home tonight, it's time to make another donation to Planned Parenthood. Thank you.
My name's Liz Madden, I live at 713 Creek Drive in Radnor. I wanted to follow up on, on Dr. Giuliano's statement about the humanity of the unborn. When Roe v. Wade was just, was solved, that was actually enacted fifty years ago, we didn't know how much life and the development of the baby inside the womb was. So, at five or six weeks gestational age, an unborn human being's heart begins to beat. At eight weeks, he begins to move in the womb. At nine weeks, all the basic physiological functions are present. At ten weeks, vital organs begin to function, and hair, fingernails, and toenails begin to form. At eleven weeks, an unborn human being's diaphragm is developing, and at twelve weeks, the unborn human being has taken on the human form in all relevant respects. I'm opposed to the legislation that you are considering, and I echo the sentiments of most of the people that have already spoken. And one thing I'm particularly opposed to is the fact that you mentioned that the twenty, after, after twenty-four weeks, the abortions would not be allowed before that, they would. But this is the baby that I just described to you, that you would be approving killing of. The other thing that I'm very concerned about is that, that legislation would open up the likes of Dr. Kermit Guznell practicing here. I mean, if you ban the police in the Radnor Township from getting involved in any, anybody that wants to perform abortions, which is basically what this says, someone like Guznell is serving three fight, three life sentences for the babies that he killed during his practice. So, I hope you will reconsider your decision about this matter. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my, is this working? My name's Doug McCown, I live at 216 Pablo Avenue. I'm ambivalent about this legislation, I must confess, after having heard a lot of the comments and arguments for and against it, so I have to take some more time and worth, take some more thought about it. But my comment is that the decision in Roe was about much more than just a medical procedure, okay? It was and is about the autonomy of women and their ability to run their own lives, in the same way that men have been able to run their lives for generations, indeed millennia. Indeed, the primary arguments in Roe were related to the ability of women to fully and fairly participate in the economic, commercial, and public lives of the nation and of the world. The result of this decision has been an explosion in the participation of women in all aspects of our society. Women now make up half of the people graduating from college, they're now professionals in many, many fields, as doctors, lawyers, engineers, business leaders, public service, including many elected officials, need I say more, such as senators and governors, as well as commissioners. These have been the results of women being able to plan their futures and control the factors that enable them to fulfill those plans and those dreams. This is a part of the fabric of American society today, much more than it was a half century ago.
And then based on that, the Congress and states have prohibited, prohibited from restricting it through certain periods of the pregnancy, ending the pregnancy during certain periods of time. The Congress and most of the states have adhered to this until fairly recently. And again, the result of this decision has been that women have been achieving roles in society which would have been all but impossible 50 or 60 years ago. It should be noted that as of today, women are not guaranteed equal rights under our Constitution, something that I believe we should be rectified with an equal rights amendment, but that's another issue. I believe that Roe should continue to be the law of the land, but that's beyond my control, other than my vote, which I will certainly exercise. That said, if we're truly pro-life, then we should be making sure that every child has a healthy food to eat, has a safe and healthy home to live in, has proper clothing, attends good schools that can address the specific needs, and lives on safe streets where they can go outside and play and not be struck by stray bullets like happens in Philadelphia occasionally. If we're truly pro-life, then we should be ensuring that the pregnant women have access to prenatal and neonatal care and live in that safe and healthy home for that child until that child's an adult. And of course, bring the fathers into it and be responsible that way. Again, the decision in Roe was and continues to be about the autonomy of women and the freedom that they have to make their own decisions about their lives and their ability to contribute to society. Thanks.
I'm not sure why I came tonight, but anytime we're talking about abortion and those rights, I get riled up and I even got my button out that I've had saved in my saving drawer for many years. Roe became the law of the land the year I graduated high school and I never had to know really personally what life was like for girls and women who became pregnant and didn't want that or were out of wedlock. And we didn't talk about that much either. But as I got older, I asked my mother, she died when she was 80, she'd be 86 now, and I asked her what women did. And she said, Valerie, women always found a way. And she gave me some examples of the bedroom or going to another country or paying someone privately so it could be done oh-so discreetly, but it always was done. And one time she said something to me which surprised me because she was a woman of strong faith and a very, we're very conservative, the family I came from, and, and everything, I should say. And she said, Valerie, always two syllables, not three, I considered it a necessary evil. And I remembered her saying that because I never heard her say about, that about anything else. And I thought about what you're about, talking about today and the decisions you have to make, and I've listened to each of your opinions. I think maybe it's not the time to vote on this. I think, I'm kind of glad that we're discussing it as a community because we come from different places and have different thoughts. I thought though that maybe this isn't quite the place to address this and to limit our police department's ability to do their job. I wouldn't want to see that. When, when someone stole mail from my mailbox and wrote a huge fraudulent check, which we figured out in November, they were there immediately and helped me solve that problem. I thought that maybe the questions to be asked were more that when, when the law changes, thinking things through to their logical conclusion, what we'll do then? Because if it becomes illegal, not only will healthcare professionals lose their license and go to jail, but we have to think what will happen to women who choose that option because it is a choice and it is thought about and it's a service that's sought. So, we'd have to think, actually, what crime would we, what would, what penalty would we give women? And that's horrifying for me to think about. The other thought I wondered about is, for example, if our police had to come into a situation, someone mentioned earlier botched abortion. I'm thinking of, well, I didn't have to have an abortion, but had I been a kid and pregnant, I would have just had to commit suicide because my parents, I would have been too ashamed. But for people who have to do it on their own, and you see my button, when the police were to come, would we have to press charges against people who were hemorrhaging because they tried to abort or were taken to the hospital because they were septic because it was so dirty? So, I, I don't think we want to, I don't think this is the best place to vote on this. I know we have to be active and we all have different opinions, but they're just things I thought maybe we could hold off for tonight. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, Dan Finley, Midland Avenue. This is a very contentious issue for sure and very politicized. And I'm not sure anybody is going to change their mind based on the eloquent debate happening on both sides. But what I want to address and the civics lesson that we got was, I think, very compelling. We didn't elect you for what you're trying to do right now, right? You were elected to make our neighborhoods nice, sidewalks, streets, power lines, stormwater management. The abuse of power that you're considering right now is staggering. And maybe it's for a political stunt, you got the news here, that's fantastic. But to think that four elected local officials who were not elected for this whatsoever are going to take over a local police force and tell them what to do, use your imagination of where that can go, how corrupt that can become. You have the power of the person, the control of the police force. In a comical way, this is like the Dukes of Hazzard. You know, someone's boss hog and they control the sheriff. I mean, you gotta rethink this, right? I know, I know you're passionate about this issue, but this is not the way to do it. You weren't elected to do this. Taking control of our police force is a corruption of power that you should step back from, regardless of where you stand on this issue. There's other ways to debate this issue. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Elizabeth Stahl, Windermere Avenue. I would just like to say ditto.
I'm obviously speaking here not as an official, but as a resident of Radnor. And I've heard a number of people describe this as political theater. And I'd like to say something in support of political theater. I'm old enough to have protested the Vietnam War, which was political theater and influenced a country and changed minds and opinions and led to the conclusion. I'm old enough, at 77, to have, remember the Civil Rights Movement and to have participated in some of it. That was political theater and it changed minds and it brought something in front of people that needed to be brought. I know that there is a major segment of our population that has a deep and abiding anger over the belief that the Supreme Court will allow states to take away a right that women have had for more than 50 years. There's a strong belief that the Republican-dominated Pennsylvania Legislature will follow up the Supreme Court decision by passing restrictions on a woman's right to make choices about her own body. Heightening that fear are the vindictive and oppressive laws that have already been passed in places like Oklahoma and Texas. These laws not only seek to end abortion, but try to give anti-abortion advocates the ability to persecute and prosecute any woman or doctor or family or friend who helps a woman do what was legal the day before the decision was announced. I believe that a large majority of our citizens are outraged by the possibility that Pennsylvania might try to join these states. We've heard what the Republican governor has said. I believe our citizens of Radnor want a way of expressing opposition to laws that limit choice. This proposed legislation is a way of expressing that outrage. It's a way of showing their opposition before the legislature does something foolish, before the legislature turns citizens into bounty hunters and turns doctors and pregnant women I believe that there are a lot, a lot of our citizens, and in fact, I believe it's a substantial majority, who believe that the state should not be getting involved in intimate medical decisions, that a woman has the right to receive the safest and best medical health care that can be prescribed for her. They want local government to express its opposition. And I believe that that is what you're doing. You're saying before the state has done anything, that they will face this in our, they will face opposition in our community and hopefully other communities. These people also believe that to whatever small extent the ban reduces abortions, the last thing our country needs is an increase in unwanted children. Let's realize that there is a need to shout our opposition that is more important than the exact wording of the law or even whether it's overturned, as some people suggested it might be. Thank you for proposing this and for giving us a chance to speak out.
I'm Marita Finley. I live on Midland Avenue. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for what you do. We, we do appreciate it, you know, you're trying to provide a service to our community. I'm not going to go into a whole, a whole bunch of reasoning as to why I am very, very, very strongly pro-life. I, I am a Radnor Township resident, so I do have the right to speak here. We've been paying a lot of taxes for 22 years. What I'm just going to try to tell you is, you're so wildly off-base with understanding the pulse of your community. This, this place is so wonderful. It is so hot. People try for so long to get into this area because it's wonderful. It's families, it's kids, it's great schools, it's people working together. It is building communities up, building families up. And abortion, quite frankly, destroys that. You know, why? I, I have, I have seven children. It's my adult daughters who have challenged me, who have said, Mom, can you get a little bit more vocal? Can you please, we, we really deserve better than, than this garbage that's being rammed at our, in our faces constantly? The abuse of power. You telling us what women want and what women should have. It is a gross abuse of power and it is wrong. You're saying, trust the science. We've been listening to trust the science, trust the science for two years, rammed in our faces about how our kids have to go to school. We trust the science. It is a baby. That is why we are not anti-choice or against women, we are pro-life. And we love communities like Radnor, who have big, wonderful family communities that are together and help each other. But no, that's not why I'm speaking. Why I'm speaking is because I want to applaud Commissioner Jones for being the first one to point out the most obvious and basic thing here is, how dare we put a spot like this on our police? What, what, what law enforcement is, is dealing with nationwide right now in our cities, I mean, just bullseyes on their back. And we're going to do that to our Radnor police? We're going to all of a sudden make their jobs really difficult and uncomfortable and have, have them have to answer to other people, well, wait, are you pro-life or pro-choice? And I can't believe you did that. How dare we do that to our police officers who are so wonderful and are going to go out and try to just defend the constitutional laws? We are a free society. People are going to vote. If it gets overturned, it will go to the states, the will of the people will speak. Let the process happen. But do not, do not change what we have here in Radnor. Understand what this community is. Please, please just keep our schools great, keep our neighborhoods safe, and, and build each other up. Don't, don't, don't rip each other, don't, don't let this become this nationwide, what it is across the nation of, of neighbor, all of a sudden not liking neighbor. What did you, what did you say about that? How did you feel? Oh, I don't like you anymore. That's what's happened to this country. Don't do it to Radnor. It's too special a place. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Not seeing any, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for using your voices. I'm going to take, I'm going to make a motion for a five-minute recess. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Five minutes, we'll return. Thank you.
Good evening. If commissioners could take their seats. Good evening. Thank you. It was a little bit longer recess, and I appreciate those of you who have stayed around. We are moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is ordinance 2022-04. Introduction is amended. Amending the township zoning ordinance to permit parking within the front yard setback for single-family and two-family dwelling units located in residential zoning districts. May I get a motion?
I will so move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and hi, Mr. Kachansky. Would you like to lead us in on this?
Absolutely. Good evening. Ordinance 202204 may look familiar to you. This was in front of this board back on March 14, 2022. There's a slight change in the version that you saw then, and it was based off of the comments and feedback that I had heard at that meeting. And it is in section two, we kind of narrowed the ordinance down to the applicability to existing single-family and two-family homes that exist and that will exist at the date of adoption, should this ordinance be adopted. So the general concern was in perpetuity that this ordinance could affect or be applicable to new developments coming in. So that language there kind of narrows it down just to those homes that exist now in terms of single-family, two-family homes in residential districts. Just a brief summary of what this does allow. Currently, the code prevents homeowner from parking in their driveway if their driveway is in the front yard setback. Parking as in parking for the required spaces for residential lot. This would allow them to utilize that. Over the course of the last couple of months, the department has seen a fair share of requests come in to convert garages and do improvements on lots that have had to either be put on hold, the owner get extremely creative with their development project, or the projects have stopped because those projects would push the required parking space in the lots into a non-conforming situation. While we've seen that randomly throughout the year since I've been here, it seems like over the course of the last couple of months, it has really significantly increased in the applications coming forward. So I saw the opportunity to look at this ordinance amendment and thought that this would be a wise decision to move forward with allowing people to utilize their driveways as they currently are.
Is there?
Thank you. Commissioner comment, please.
Is there any reason why we couldn't change pre-existing at the date of enactment of this ordinance to something like January 1, 2023? Only because having tried to comb through ordinances and really struggling to figure out when they were enacted, it's easier just to know what the date is?
I would defer to John Onnet.
I'm sorry. I mean, if it's pre-existing, then, you know, it's going to be, I mean, we know when the houses were built generally, correct, Kevin?
Yes, we have records for this.
We know when the zoning ordinance is, when this went into effect. So it would have to be a pre-existing, non-conforming situation.
Right. I'm thinking it's now 2035 or something. Somebody's on Ecode 360. They're looking at the ordinance, and they're now trying to figure out whether the house that was built in 2028 or something was pre-existing at the date of enactment of this ordinance. And now we can't tell what the date of enactment of the ordinance is because Ecode 360 is a little bit vague on that sometimes. So they have to call the township and figure that out. Wouldn't it be simpler just to say January 1, 2023, or pre-existing as of whatever date we pick? June 1, July 1? I don't care.
We could do it that way. We could pick that. But it really would be pre-existing as of when this gets enacted. That's going to be your date.
Sure. We can fill in the blank as of that date, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do it that way, too.
So is this, are you asking to amend it now?
I don't even know if we need to enact, to amend it. I would just ask, it says at the date of enactment of this ordinance, we could then substitute in the final draft the date of enactment of this ordinance.
Okay, thanks. Any other commissioner comment? Maggie?
Yeah, I am leaning toward voting for this ordinance, but we did ask our planning commission to take a look at this. And they have had one meeting since then and are due to meet in two weeks, having had some time to think about it and discuss it. And I would like to table this until the next meeting.
I'm hearing a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of tabling this, please say aye. Opposed, nay? Okay, motion to table did not pass, so we will continue our conversation. Is there any other commissioner comment?
So just real quick, I was actually against this because I didn't know how this would play into those in the height-restricted areas and the Garrett Hill overlay. And thank you, Kevin, for being proactive and walking me up and down while we walk together, up and down Garrett Avenue. So we had Mr. Ask here tonight. He's a Ward 7 resident. This directly affects him, material costs, his family getting an addition done and wanting to stay in Radnor and stay in Old Oaks. So I would like to see this happen sooner than later. I know if there's an issue of advertising, is there still the issue of advertising or no, Kevin?
This would be an introduction, and it would be scheduled for the June 13 meeting for adoption.
Okay, so, okay, so we can, if we go through with this, then we can vote on it on June 13?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kevin, for doing that walk and setting me straight, and I appreciate it. And I will, I'll be in favor of it.
So somebody tell me, sorry, just quickly, can somebody tell me when the next planning commission meeting is?
It hasn't been scheduled, June 2.
June 2. So there is a planning meeting before this comes back.
June 6, Commissioner.
June 6. Thank you. Commissioner Borowski?
So Kevin, I want to thank you because you and I had a nice conversation about this today as well. But I still have the question of, you know, what would prevent people from taking their front lawns and turning them into parking spaces? Because based on what is in the parking ordinance, you know, people could technically take and put two parking spaces on their front lawn, you know, with the minor setback, and not trigger stormwater. So basically, in some cases, maybe paving their entire front lawn. So I'm just trying to understand what prevents that. And, you know, couldn't we put something in here? And maybe this is something that planning would consider or want to bring forward when it comes back to us, saying that, you know, this would be done specifically in conjunction with a garage renovation. So if I owned an apartment, or I owned, you know, a residential dwelling where more than one person lives, and I rent those spaces, rent that out, they can't create spaces and then say, oh, now we have off-street parking as well. So walk me through that a little bit so we can better understand.
Absolutely. There's nothing stopping somebody from taking advantage of that. But I have to look back on the 11 years that I've been here, and I cannot think of a single incident where an applicant, a resident, came in to do that scenario, and we denied it because it violated the code. And every incidence that I can think of, it's always been as a result of a project. So people are not, this provision is very obscure. It's very buried into the code. People don't realize that when they're going through renovation projects, and most of them were surprised that their projects are stopped, or they were told to go to zoning hearing board, or come up with an alternative means. So they're not aware that this ordinance provision exists. So there is nothing that has been preventing over the last 11-plus years of residents from applying to do what is being perceived as what's going to happen if this ordinance pass. Could it happen? Sure. Will we have one or two people a year, maybe, do it? Maybe. But I don't foresee that based off of history of what has happened here in the township. And there's probably a fair share, if you narrow it down to just garage renovations, because of the concern that this is going to be people paving over the front yards. What about the houses and those properties, which probably very similar to the number of rental units that would want to come in, where people that want to pave over the front yards, that don't have a driveway, that don't have a garage, that want to provide a driveway space? You know, you're going to have that, if you narrow it down to just a garage renovation, now you're excluding them from being able to put in an off-street parking space in their driveway just because they don't have a garage, or it's not associated with a garage project.
Okay, so I would argue that it's not obscure anymore, since we're talking about it here in public. So it's not obscure anymore. But do we want people, and do we want people in neighborhoods where they don't have off-street parking, paving over, adding more impervious, doing that because it is below and it won't trigger any stormwater? There'll be no, I'm not suggesting changing stormwater until we do change stormwater, so, which I know we're working on at some point. You know, I guess I'm just, I just feel like if there was some sort of qualifier, it might prevent some sort of now, you know, people taking, seeing this as an opportunity and now being able to do this.
And I think in most cases that we've seen, people are already utilizing their driveways, and they're not expanding the driveway as part of a project unless we have required them to. For, so those few, there were one or two projects that decided to expand their driveway and push the replacement space alongside the garage. So there was a significant increase in impervious coverage. But short of requiring them to do that, there was no intent of them to do that. And I know that because we saw the plans coming in with no improvements to the driveway. So the current ordinance required them to increase impervious coverage. People are utilizing their driveways in this manner now. They're not utilizing their garages. I would say a fair share of the applications that we were going to see come in, we're just going to continue utilizing their property as they were with no planned increase in impervious coverage. You know, if the concern is the increase in impervious coverage and no lack of stormwater mechanisms, there is the mechanism as we're going through these stormwater ordinance to maybe look at that threshold of where we start looking at infiltration. And maybe it's not at 500 feet. Maybe it's at 400 square feet or 450 square feet, to kind of catch those in-betweener projects, but not yet require full stormwater management. And I think that that's a very viable option and gives the residents a greater flexibility to utilize their lots.
So I am a big proponent, you know, we have our boards and commissions for a reason, and that is for them to opine on these, you know, when we send it to them, we ask them to opine on it and give us a recommendation. What would happen if we introduced it this evening, and then the planning commission took it, and they had some recommendations or changes they wanted to make, and that came forward to us on June 13? What would that, how would that adjust the timeline? I know Delaware County Planning has already looked at this. So how would that adjust?
So both county and township planning commissions have reviewed the version that's in front of you tonight. Because that version was made post the March Board of Commissioners meeting, but pre Delaware County and pre-planning commission. They would, as any other ordinance, they would give you their recommendation, and then this board could look at those recommendations, adopt all, some, or none of that. If you adopt any changes to it, it starts that process over, would have to go back to the county, back to the planning commission, and it would be back in front of this board in either August or September.
And how many residents do you currently have kind of waiting on this change to be made so that they can do their projects?
Four to six.
Thank you.
Other commissioner?
I have one more question to piggyback off of Commissioner Borowski. So what is the cost if they were to have to go before the planning commission for a variance? How much additional money would that add to their project?
Sure. Well, it would be to the zoning hearing board, you're looking at an application fee of $550, probably a couple thousand dollars to get a site plan drawn up. Most people are not comfortable representing themselves in front of the zoning hearing board. It's not a requirement, but we do recommend that if you're not comfortable representing yourself, that you retain the services of a land use attorney, and that could be a couple thousand dollars. And the tricky part of that, and I know it's an easy, hey, just let this go to zoning hearing board. But you need to have a hardship to go to front of the zoning hearing board. And it takes one neighbor that may not, that will get notification to oppose it, and that can throw a huge wrench. And just because you pay thousands of dollars to get in front of the zoning hearing board, there's nothing that guarantees, in fact, it's, the burden's on the applicant to prove a hardship. Whether they can prove that or not, that's up to the zoning hearing board members in evaluating it. But they could spend a couple thousand dollars on an application and be denied because a resident had a concern about it that may be unfounded.
And you said that there are some people who have found, you know, clever ways to go on with part of their project but not touch the garage. So would this leave them hanging in the balance?
Well, those projects, what I can think of specifically, they widened the driveway and pushed it to the side of the garage utilizing a pervious pave system that, I asked them to reconsider that because it's, while it counts as pervious, I think the utility of that in a residential application could be quite difficult for a family that has young children. But ultimately, they weighed the pros and cons, not wanting to go to zoning hearing board because it was cheaper than doing that, and not waiting for this ordinance to be amended. Whether or not they ultimately take that out and put asphalt in there, that would be up to them, and deal with any ramifications from a grading permit process. But they, you know, made a decision for their family that they needed to get this addition going and not wait. And that was, I want to say, back in February.
Mr. Kachansky, would this be an issue that we may be well-served to discuss during comprehensive planning? Is there, as you know, we're going into that process now. We're moving towards it quickly. Is there an urgency now? I do understand that there's some residents who are waiting for it. But I am curious about, is this the type of thing that you would want to review during that process?
As part of the comprehensive plan, you want to review all the aspects of the code. I think if this was something that was a larger rezoning or a land use issue that could really have unintended consequences throughout the township, then I would say we probably need to hold off on this. And I wouldn't have brought it in front of this board, looking at it that is a relatively micro issue, dealing with very few homes that ultimately, in reality, that we're going to see, even with the expanded applying, it's nothing that I think that we need to wait on. I think that it's a relatively minor, in my opinion, ordinance amendment that's not going to have that big of a ripple effect.
Thank you. Are there other commissioner comments?
Yeah, so this is basically making it legal to park in your driveway, in some cases.
In, when you boil it down, yes. Making it legal to allow people to do what they've been doing in 90% of the scenarios that we've seen come in front of us that we've had to put on hold.
I'll just let the board know again. I was skeptical. I met with you, Kevin. I spoke with one of my constituents, one of my neighbors in Old Oaks. He has an issue. Material prices are going up. He's got two small children. He'd like to have this addition done by the beginning of school year. And I don't know if that's going to happen. And he's working from home. So with COVID and coming out of COVID or going back in, or whatever this new world that we live in now, there are a lot of moving parts. So if you don't think that it's a huge encumbrance on the township and every, as you're saying, then again, it's something that I'll be voting for. And I would like to see us vote on this and at least get this going so some of our residents can go through. And then we can take a look at this again in the comprehensive plan, Commissioner Borowski, to what you said, or make changes if we need to do it. But there are certain residents that of no fault of their own would, you know, would like to move on with their lives and their projects. Thanks.
Additional comment from commissioners?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. One, I support
One, I support amending the ordinance, and I know there's neighbors in the audience tonight and watching on TV who are in this situation where they are looking to expand livable space in their house, and are impacted by the current ordinance. However, I want to do it the right way. And, you know, I know there's been some discussion, and that the last planning meeting, they tabled this item, to look into it further, and we'll be addressing it at the, at the meeting in June. I'm very interested to hear some of their comments, because as Kevin said, we're talking about a handful of homes who are looking to build out into the current garage space. I would like to see this ordinance restricted to the garage space, and it impacts a lot of homes in West Wayne. And I, and so, you know, I, I would like to see it amended, but I'd like to see it tightened even further, so that we're focused on what the issue is. You know, Kevin, as you said, the issues that you've received are all about expanding garages into livable space. We're not talking about building additional driveway spaces in the front yard. So, let's, let's address the problem, and restrict it to that, and would like to see what the planning committee has to say. I do have an issue with, with the current language, where, and I may be, I may be wrong in this, but when I see that it, it's restricted to dwelling on the date of, you know, when this ordinance is enacted. So, you know, hypothetically, let's say we enact this ordinance, a year from now, the homeowners raise the property and rebuild on it, but they build a garage. 10 years from now, they sell the house, and the new homeowners want to build into that garage space. That dwelling wasn't there when this ordinance was enacted, so now that home, you know, they, they're going to be in that same situation that the neighbors are in now. So, my thoughts are, it should be lot, lot space, lot size, not current dwelling. So, Kevin, I'd appreciate hearing your thoughts on that, and if that's something, you know, hopefully, that's something that the, the planning committee will address when they meet in June.
Well, I think one of the concerns that we were having is the applicability of this applying to, in perpetuity to all development. So, you, you take a house, you raise it, you build a new house, you're not entitled to that. The new house has that opportunity to adequately plan for spatial needs. Everything that we've been seeing, these are extremely, I don't want to say extremely older, but they're, they're relatively older homes, that are not built in, you know, they're usually the 50s or 60s. It's not modern construction. Some of the newer developments are deed restricted, the one off of Highland Avenue, it's, they're deed restricted from converting that garage space, so that it's there, that, that all-street parking space is there in perpetuity. You know, it's, you can always find areas to tighten up or loosen up on these ordinances, it's just, that was the pervasive comments that we were hearing, that if this can continue on and on, you're just going to have, you know, sprawl on these types of things. And as lots are redeveloped, redeveloped in the right way, because the older homes that, that were facing this issue now, the cars are bigger, the garages weren't designed for those types of cars, families have more cars. So, if you're going to tear down and build a new home, chances are that those homes are going to accommodate that type of more modern lifestyle than what the, the current homes are. What's going to happen in 50 or 60 years? Chances are, we're going to have a completely different zoning code, a whole different comprehensive plan, and look at things differently. And at that point in time, you address it then. That's why the comprehensive plans get updated, or should be getting updated every 10 years. Use that as a refreshing tool to then go back through and, and look at your codes and see how you can do those. So, it's not uncommon to refresh your codes every 10 to 15 years, based off of the findings of your updated comprehensive plan.
But, but this ordinance change wouldn't, wouldn't account for 10 years. I mean, that house could be raised next year, could be sold within two years, and that, that new homeowner's going to be in the same spot if they want to build out the garage. So, again, why are we, why are we not just focused on the garage space and allowing that to occur, instead of worrying about everything else? I mean, again, the issues you're receiving are about garage space, not about front yard driveways.
Then I guess I'm not sure I understand the concern.
The ordinance language should be lot size, not dwelling, or current lot space, not current dwelling.
But I'm not sure how lot size comes into play, because you can have a house on a two-acre property that is situated in such a manner that this ordinance would be applicable to. You can have a house on a quarter acre that is situated where this ordinance wouldn't be applicable to. So, I'm not sure that lot size necessarily comes into play.
Well, I'm thinking it does, I mean, it definitely does in, in West Wayne, in the homes that we're, we're hearing about.
We, we had one on West Wayne, it was, it was in an R1 zoning district, which is one-acre zoning, which is probably one of the larger ones that we had. And, you know, you would have to, in essence, have 80 feet of space from the right-of-way to the dwelling, to be able to get your two parking spaces in there. Most houses don't have, unless you're starting to really get on into the more rural areas of the township, that length of driveway. But it is applicable in a variety of districts and a variety of lot sizes. So, trying to narrow it down in that way, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to capture what we're trying to, to help the residents and give them a little bit of flexibility without increasing footprints of buildings and overly increasing impervious coverage with driveways.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other commissioner comment. I'd like to call for public comment, please.
I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening, Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road in Rosemont, and raise questions and concerns about this proposed ordinance. I appreciate the work some of you have done beforehand, looking into this and actually viewing the sites. And with the documentation attached to the board pack that indicates that the staff recommended the adoption of this ordinance, as you've heard, and the Delaware County Planning Department also found the clarification provided by the two versions helpful in their decision-making, I believe that the Radnor Township Planning Commission entable in the ordinance on May 2nd was acting in the best interest of all the residents of township. Like I, they have questions. Is it appropriate to make this change, as we've heard before, when we have a comprehensive land use plan on the horizon? Shouldn't we make this change consistent with the big picture of our township, and not done in a piecemeal process? What will be the impact of such a decision? I suggest it is more than converting a garage space into a livable area. How will it impact stormwater? How will it reduce green space and view sheds in our neighborhoods? How might it result in a loss of vegetation, perhaps tree, trees, shrubs, grass, that are growing of greater significance in our climate emergency? How will impact those who use the, who impact the safety of those who use our sidewalks? Children learning to ride bikes, toddlers pushing their carts, seniors with their walkers, kids and parents walking their dogs, or others who stroll our streets? Sightlines for pedestrians and drivers are important. Would it increase the risk to vehicles on our streets? Living in a neighborhood where cars are permitted to park in front of establishments and then back onto Conestoga Road has given me firsthand experience when setbacks are limited or seemingly nonexistent. How will parking in front yard setbacks increase traffic and risks in areas where student housing exists, such as ours? Should areas such as the GHN district, which has limited front yard setbacks, that are accommodated for development through increased impervious service in their rear yards, be included in this ordinance? What's the significance of those pre-existing dwelling units in this ordinance? Will this create future conflict? Should the ordinance speak to perhaps residential property lines as opposed to existing dwelling units? Many properties in this neighborhood, particularly in older ones, were non-conforming in the past, and others may continue to be existing in a Radnor. It would appear problematic to approve an ordinance that provides blanket permission for such parking and front yard setbacks that already exist in areas of high density and high traffic. Can relief not be found for those who need such accommodation through special variances to the zoning board? Just what is the benefit to all of Radnor residents, to us as a whole, to adopt this ordinance? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's MJ Fruman, I live at 10 Radnor Way, I'm also a member of the Planning Commission. Thank you for choosing me to take the vacancy. I wanted to give some thought about this ordinance amendment, but also I want to correct a misconception, if I may. The ordinance amendment has nothing to do with allowing parking within the front yard setback. It just allows the residents to take advantage of the front yard setback to meet the township requirement when they're converting the garage. That's an important distinction. So, on Monday, May 2nd, the Planning Commission actually met about this ordinance amendment. We took comment from the public, both positive and negative, and clearly, if you read the ordinance, if you do a little bit of a study of who it's going to benefit, it benefits primarily folks in three districts, Conestoga Village, South Devon, and of course, Garrett Hill. And from my vantage point, the Planning Commission actually is very sympathetic to those residents, who over time, while they had a garage space, it's become over time unusable. The cars have grown, and the garage space, you know, perhaps got partially converted over time, and now they're looking to convert it now. And really, anybody that's ever been to Garrett Hill, or Conestoga Village, or, you know, any of the affected areas, clearly understands that something needs to be done here, and they can see that an amendment would be beneficial. And we know as planners, certainly when we see things once, twice, four to six times in front of the zoning hearing board, clearly, we have to take action, it's just good planning. That being said, the Planning Commission did have some concerns. We did feel that the broad scope of the amendment would benefit not just the, the areas that needed, but also the areas that don't. And the original ordinance passed in 1992, we don't really have a lot of information about the intent of the original ordinance, and the Planning Commission really wanted to take its time to be thoughtful about what we're going to do before we pass such a broad amendment. And that's exactly why on May 2nd, we had asked for the Board of Commissioners to give us additional time, to give us additional time to contemplate and recommend some changes, and really to limit the scope of this amendment to the areas that rightfully deserve it. So, simply put, we felt that the amendment was too broad, and while clearly, Mr. Kachansky was well-intentioned, it would have a tendency to change the aesthetic and the character of the township that we love. So, the Planning Commission did at the time commit to coming up with a workable solution at our next meeting of June 6th. So, my request in front of you today is simply this. Let the Planning Commission that you selected go to work for you. Allow us the 14 days to meet, make a recommendation, and I realize that we all want to move quickly on this. We all want to help the residents that are impacted. But we want to conclude our thorough review, our thorough analysis, and we promise to give you a pathway forward on this important amendment. Thank you.
Mike Robinson, 565 West Wayne Avenue, I believe I was spoken about earlier. I, I fear that we are letting the perfect get in the way of the good here. The existing code in my district requires that my parking be 80 feet from the right-of-way. I have a garage that is 75 feet from the right-of-way, it is non-conforming, it's nowhere close to the road. I park my cars in the driveway every day. So do many of my neighbors, so do people all over this township. If it goes through another amendment at the Planning Commission, as Mr. Kachansky said, we wouldn't be talking about this going through until September. I was notified of this, as Mr. Kachansky said, obscure provision in the zoning code at the beginning of this year. The first meeting on this was in March. If it doesn't go through until September, that's six months delay on the project that I have, which I had to refinance to take money out, and I have all of the material sitting in my current garage, where apparently the car is supposed to go. I share Mr. Kachansky's sentiments. I cannot envision a world where putting this ordinance in and amending the zoning code will open a floodgate of people paving over their front yards to put parking spots on. If you'll allow me to be a bit facetious, most people would die of embarrassment before they did that in this, in this township, especially in the place where I live. You know, in, in general, I'm in favor of letting people in residential areas have more freedom, but the code is what the code is. I believe that the currently proposed ordinances will allow the people who are now being held up because of this 1990s change to the code, to move forward, and as the commissioners have rightfully recognized, there is a review of the comprehensive plan coming up. This can be addressed in the unlikely event that there is a flood of people changing the aesthetics of the town, which again, I just don't think is going to happen. But there's a very real financial, practical impact on the people right now that are being held up by this dated and clearly not well-thought-out ordinance from then. Why not give relief to those people, give relief to me, of course, I am biased here, and then revisit this when it comes to the comprehensive plan, when it's rethought? That's what I would propose, that's what I think is fair. I think the current zoning code is causing issues for people, and that that itself is more of an evil than making this ordinance, using this ordinance to amend the zoning code right now and allow people to, to develop their properties like they want to. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this issue? Commissioner Borowski, do you have an additional question?
Well, I just want to ask, so, it would appear we have four to six residents that are waiting for this ordinance to pass, and I, you know, I, I feel a little, you know, I feel responsible, I do feel badly that there are people waiting, that you're refinancing projects. Is there a way, if, but I do feel strongly that, you know, I would like to hear from the Planning Commission, and I want to thank you, Mr. Fruman, you spoke very eloquently, and I do believe the Planning Commission does want to find a path forward. And then maybe we would have an ordinance that we would need to address in comprehensive plan. So, I'm just wondering if we've got the people that we know now, who didn't go to zoning for a variance, because they were waiting for this to pass through the Board of Commissioners, which is always a scary thought, I think, to begin with, waiting on us. But is there a way to give some relief just to those people now, to either, you know, go right to zoning, not have to incur a cost, so that their project, they can get a variance on their projects, and then we give the planning time that they need, and have an ordinance that's good, that isn't going to impact people? And I'm not saying this is a thing, but I'm just throwing it out there. I, I don't know that we can do that, but I'm throwing it out there.
I'll let John talk to the legalities of that. In terms of going to the zoning hearing board, yes, the township could waive an application fee, but that's all that we would have in our control. The applicant still has application requirements that are more significant than the application fee, still has potential legal representation that is significantly more than the survey or the application fee combined. And the hurdle of, what is the hardship? And again, one resident showing up to oppose that puts the zoning hearing board in a very precarious situation of, you know, is there a hardship? Is there a true hardship? Does the applicant meet that burden? And I'm not a fan of just sending somebody to the zoning hearing board to try to cure an issue when there seems to be an issue with the underlying ordinance, and not allowing people to utilize their driveway. This amendment will be back in front of Planning Commission before it's back in front of this board. The Planning Commission will then have, in excess of 90 days, that have had this ordinance in their possession to review, should be able to come to that meeting, prepared to have the discussion, and make a recommendation, that would be back in front of this body before you can choose to adopt it, or consider their ideas and their recommendations for further revision. So, Planning Commission will have plenty of time to put thoughtful consideration into the recommendation for this board to consider. the recommendation for this board to consider.
But any revision that would come forward from the Planning Commission, then it kind of, everything has to start all over again.
Correct. But it's, coming from Planning Commission is a recommendation, and this board can choose to accept that recommendation in whole or part, or not at all.
Can I make a comment? So if this fails, and it goes, then it's going to go back to planning. Am I correct?
It's going back to planning regardless. So by introducing the ordinance tonight, you're not putting the Planning Commission in any particular...
Sure. So when does planning meet?
Shaun, this was asked and answered. They're meeting on the 6th. We meet on the 13th. So they are before us.
And that's why I'm asking this. So could we meet on the 7th, either by Zoom to pass something so we can speed this project up? Because there are people working, there are issues with labor, there are issues with material costs. These people want to get it done. So if we have a one-vote meeting, no?
Shaun, then we would meet on the 13th.
Yes.
Which is only, like, it's shortly after their meeting.
We wouldn't have advertising...
Shortly after, but we only have one meeting a month in June and July and August, correct? So this is just going to get prolonged. I'm trying to help the constituents tomorrow. That's all I'm trying to do. If it fails, if it fails.
I mean, what you can do, so tonight, this is up for introduction. If you approve the introduction, it gets advertised for June 13th for possible enactment and adoption. You need the time between tonight and the 13th to advertise it twice so you meet the MPC requirements and you meet the charter requirements. So you can schedule that, come back on the 13th. In the meantime, Planning Commission can do their thing and look at it and make a recommendation. You'll have that in hand before the 13th. You can make a decision that night whether to enact the ordinance or to delay it.
Fine. Then one more point of order. What's considered too material where we'd need to re-advertise it?
It depends on what comes out of there. If it's substantial change, then, you know, you could open the hearing, and then you could re-advertise it after that hearing. But, I mean, I can't speculate what the Planning Commission is going to do with it.
You can still public comment.
But, you know, but you could enact it on the 13th and then come back and revise it again with whatever the Planning Commission wants to do. So you'll have both. You'll have the recommendation, you'll have an ordinance ready to adopt if the boards have a mind to adopt it on the 13th. I mean, that's the only way you're going to meet everybody's preferences, you know, sitting there. But tonight is introduction. We have enough time to advertise it for the 13th. You could enact it that night and still, and try to incorporate the Planning Commission's recommendation, or try to incorporate the Planning Commission's recommendation later this year with another ordinance. But otherwise, you've got to start the process. If it's substantial, you've got to go through the process again.
So if we suppose we pass it, and planning comes forward with some significant changes, we could amend it. If we amended it afterwards, would people who are currently in the queue be able to do their projects under the existing ordinance? And then we could amend it after that?
Right.
To incorporate what planning is suggesting?
What planning suggests may not change the ability of the residents that are in the queue to do what they want to do. We don't know. I mean, I don't know what the Planning Commission's looking at. It may just be some additional requirements for somebody in the future that wants to do this. But the people in the queue get the benefit of this ordinance, and you can come back with whatever the recommendation is coming out of the Planning Commission to then update this ordinance if you enact it on the 13th.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other Commissioners speaking. I would like to finalize public comment. Thank you.
Hi. You might recognize me from the very first comment of the meeting. I had time to go home and, you know, put the kids to bed. I thought since the, I guess the original vote was 6-1, that, you know, we were now with Shaun, who's now my Ward Commissioner, on board. This wouldn't, you know, would have been, you know, quick. Little frustrated, so, you know, we're trying to do this. Again, there are 14 homes on my block, sir, and, you know, there are now only four left that have not converted their garage. So since March, I think, you know, this resolution or ordinance change has been out there. You know, my involvement really started with the Planning Commission meeting, which was frustrating to witness. The April meeting was canceled, and the May meeting was one where it looked like, and sir, I was there with you, they were seeing it for the first time. And so, again, if this goes back, my fear is that this turns into, you know, what was, you know, March, I thought, was a no-brainer because so many homes on my block, again, not changing the footprint, everyone parks in the driveway anyway, would have just, you know, the permitting process would have gone as long as it takes to review an application, make sure that the builder is reputable and everything is safe. And it turns into, you know, we're three months later talking about doing something in another month that then gets worked into August, September. And, you know, everyone is aware that inflation is real, it's hard to get the attention of builders, it's hard to find labor, and you're asking me to go hire a lawyer and then pay an additional application fee to do essentially what has already been done numerous times. So again, I would just, you know, have you hopefully consider that. And I really, really strenuously support the passing of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I'm not seeing any. I'm going to call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. It passes. I look forward to hearing from planning, and we will have this on our next agenda. This night is feeling a little bit long. We're going to move on to Item E, Resolution 2022-62, authorizing the award of construction contract number B 22003 for the valley-run stream bank stabilization and Robin Hood Road culvert extension project to A.J. Jurek Incorporated to include contingency and construction inspection and services in the total amount of $766,174 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund borrowing plan. Mr. Norsini, would you like to speak to us about this?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is also known as the Robin Hood Road Project. So two and a half years ago, severe storms impacted a house on Robin Hood Road. The Board of Commissioners authorized engineering to perform what was a temporary fix to the stream to address the concerns with the house. So in the legislative memo, there's a rather lengthy summation of the history of the project. We won't get into that. But basically, the board allowed us to enter into design for this project. We went through DEP. The crux of the project is the stream will be more or less encased in a pipe to bring it past the home where all the damage occurred, take it out of play of that house. And as I noted earlier in the meeting, we are in a similar situation to the tree bid. The lowest responsible bidder is A.J. Jurek, Inc., in the amount of $589,365. There was a bidder approximately $5,000 cheaper, but they did not submit the appropriate documents, specifically the, their financial, audited financial statement from the latest year. So we are requesting that the board award this project along with the inspection and contingency. And you may recall, a $500,000 grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities was awarded to the project, was awarded to the township for this project, some of which was used to reimburse for expenditures for the emergency project. So we currently have approximately $338,000 remaining from the grant, the rest to be funded by the Stormwater Fund, '04 Fund.
Thank you. Can I hear a motion? In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner comment? Anyone? Public comment? I'm not seeing any. I'll take the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Passing unanimously with Commissioner Faria for the day. We will move on to Resolution 2022-64, establishing an audit committee as an independent advisor to the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Tate, do you want to, well, let me take a motion. Can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tate, will you talk to us about this?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, before you tonight is the resolution to establish this audit committee. As just a little bit of background, in January of 2011, Radnor Township adopted Resolution 2011-01, creating the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee. That committee, known as CarFac for short, was tasked with advising and reporting to the board on various topics and issues, aimed at promoting transparency and financial accountability. The topics, at just a very broad level, first and foremost was the annual financial audit, budget and capital planning, financial reporting, ERP systems, information technology, investments, debt management, including our bond financing, pension and OPEB liabilities, as well as other special projects, including real estate transactions. We've been fortunate to have a wealth of expertise on our committee from our resident volunteers, backgrounds that include law, accounting and finance, insurance, IT, and real estate, as well as a local business owner. What we have seen over the years is that the audit committee, also what I'd like to mention is that in the very first year of its existence, CarFac formed their own subgroups within the committee, subgroups focusing on different areas of expertise. First, and again, the number one was the annual audit. We've found that the audit function is a very narrowly focused but very deep type of expertise with individuals with CPA backgrounds, knowledge of the Government Accounting Standards Boards and internal controls, and all of the other details that go along with the annual financial audit. That subgroup tended to operate year over year in accordance with the timing of the financial audit, independent of the projects and other tasks that CarFac would embark upon at the board's direction. With the, early in 2018, when the members of CarFac at that time had decided to disband, the one thing that did continue was the annual financial audit. That is something that will continue year over year. It's a requirement of our municipality, and the expertise is very unique. So with that in mind, without changing CarFac, any of the fundamentals of CarFac, would just, this resolution would simply carve out that audit function and create an audit committee that's geared to focusing on the annual financial audit only. And our recommendation would be to create a three-member audit committee. And CarFac can continue to exist as they do, working on the projects as designated by the board.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from Commissioners? Do we have any, well, I will just add one thing, and if this is approved, there will be an opportunity for public application for these positions. So I just want to be sure that's clear, and we will, if this is approved, we will promote that so that we can ask our residents to contribute their expertise in this area. Any other comments?
Just a comment. I think this is great. I just know that we had in the past issues filling up CarFac. So what is the mindset of how we're going to get, really, CPAs, I guess you'll need MBAs, people with municipal experience, managers? Just because I don't want to cannibalize on one, on one committee for another, and you don't want to have to pull people, and then they feel that they have to do it, and then they're spread thin, and they just don't want to do it. So just if you don't mind speaking to, we have plenty of CPAs in here, right, Ken? You're CPA. Oh, okay. Well, okay, all right. Well, we have plenty of accountants and tax lawyers and whatever. So that's just, just my thought. The cannibalization, if you can talk to the cannibalization potentially, as well as how we're going to attract these people.
Cannibalization? You mean pulling from CarFac?
Well, not pulling, but we had difficulty, as I said in the past, getting CarFac up and running after, reconstituting CarFac after it, after everyone left. So I just, I don't want to have to feel, because sometimes we're in executive sessions, we're like, oh, well, you'd be good for this, but would you consider this? And they're here for something, and it's not necessarily exactly what they want. It's probably a smaller issue. It's just one more committee that we're going to have to deal with.
No, no, good question.
How often will they meet? All that other, you know.
I think, I think this is, because it's a unique skill set, it's something that those who are in the CPA world and the public accounting world can relate to much easier. It's very defined, it's very focused, it's very limited in scope and engagement, and those who have some background with public accounting and with audits, I think would be interested because they know what they're getting into, they know exactly what's involved, the length of the audit, and they know the outcomes that they can expect. So that, we have found, those with that type of skill set are happy with that kind of an engagement. Our CarFac members, who are not the CPAs, who have a variety of skill sets and strengths, I have found, we have, most of our group currently is very heavily engaged and involved because they enjoy the project environment. They enjoy drilling into the analytics and the details and the numbers and coming up with solutions to problems or situations that we face. So it's two different types of skill sets, and I think the audit committee, I think will have no problem filling those three seats. And the existing CarFac committee is still, this could be an opportunity to reduce the numbers from a nine-member CarFac committee to, say, a seven-member CarFac committee and still be very effective.
Okay. And one more question, and I apologize, I was out of the room. So in the past, or as of now, we have Commissioners that head up or kind of, not head up, but we're kind of the point men, so to speak, for a different committee. Would you be, I mean, I don't think anyone has the, that skill set of, you know, I have an MBA, but I don't have a CPA. It's, you know, Greek and Spanish, as far as I'm concerned. Would you be running that? I know that you have a CPA. Am I correct? Bob?
I do, but I would be the administrative representative of the township.
So you would be, okay. Okay. So you'd go to the meetings and...
Yes. Technically, I would be an ex officio member of the committee.
Okay. That's my question.
Non-voting representative of the township.
But you can kind of move it along as needed.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Is there a public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 2022-06, introduction establishing guidelines for arrests without warrants. The proposed ordinance is needed as a part of the police department's accreditation process in accordance with Title 42 PACSA Section 8902 to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public.
I can take this.
Thank you, John.
Yep. The Township Police Department is in the process of going through accreditation with PLEAC, which is the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, and this is something that they raised. The Arrest Without Warrants statute, there's a statute that essentially the ordinance is incorporating the criteria that's in the statute. So this would pertain to certain summary offenses that are listed in the ordinance that an officer could effect an arrest without a warrant. It's a fairly typical requirement. The township did not have this particular ordinance on the book. The statute requires that the governing body adopt this. And the accreditation service also called it out. So it's introduction. If it's approved tonight, it'll come back on June 13th for enactment.
When we're not here, I'm going to ask if there's any commissioner comment? I will, I guess, ask the question. I've looked at Section 8902, and the proposed ordinance restates that statute almost verbatim. My question is Rule 440 in the Rules of Criminal Procedure, Criminal Procedure, which deals with arrests without warrants. There's also a comment that provides that it is intended that these proceedings will be instituted by arrest only in exceptional circumstances, such as those involving violence or the imminent threat of violence or those involving a danger that the defendant will flee. There's not a provision in the comment to the criminal rules which deals with threat to property, either public or private. I guess my question is, what is the virtue here to permitting a arrest for danger or conduct which imperils personal, sorry, conduct which imperils public or private property?
You'll have to restate that question.
Sure, I'm sorry, it's, it's late.
I don't, I don't understand the concern that the, there's...
Rule 440-
The statute, the statute references specifically, you know, this would apply upon probable cause, when there's ongoing conduct that imperils the personal security of any person or endangers public or private property. So your question is about the property?
My, yeah, my question is, given that there is a rule of criminal procedure, the comment to which provides that arrest shall only initiate summary cases in circumstances where there's violence, imminent threat of violence, or danger that the defendant will flee, those two seem to be in conflict. We can resolve that conflict by saying we're just not going to include the threat to property, in which case we're not... I mean, the conflict goes away. My question is, is there some reason why we want to keep in the, why would we arrest someone for causing a danger to property if the underlying offense is really only disorderly conduct, a summary offense?
Well, it's, it's in the ordinance because it's in the statute. So between the statute and a comment to a rule, I would probably go with the statute, particularly since PLEAC has called this statute out specifically. But I think tonight for introduction, I think it makes sense to introduce it and try to, try to sort out why there's a difference between that rule, Jack, and the statute. I'll ask Chief Flanagan, and he can ask PLEAC to give us an explanation. But, you know, they've called out the statute.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense. This is almost verbatim exactly what is in the statute. My plan is to vote for this tonight so we can bring it back for adoption, but I will not vote for it a second time at adoption unless I kind of get some more comfort on the distinction there.
I mean, it may, you know, the endanger public or private property could be arson, it could be, I mean, there-
Yeah, but then you're arresting someone for attempted arson instead of for disorderly conduct.
Yeah, I, I mean, so I'm just, you know, speculating in terms of what that would apply to. But we track the statute. You know, let me talk to the chief between now and the 13th and see if we can get some clarity on it, why there's a, why there's a difference between the two.
Thank you.
Is there additional commissioner comment? And is there public comment?
Dan Shury, Wayne. Hey, look at that, statutory law, and now we're making a decision in terms of an ordinance based on a statute that's actually in effect. Kind of makes sense that way, don't it? Look at that, plain language of a statute, and commentary regarding that. Gee, wouldn't that perhaps maybe be the appropriate approach with other types of law that we think may, in the future, go into effect? As in, waiting for them actually to go into effect, and thereafter deciding whether or not we need to deal with it on an ordinance level? It seems perhaps that some people tonight are taking positions that are contrary to other positions they're taking in the exact same meeting. This is a reason why procedure is important, and being consistent is important, and making sure that we don't get over our proverbial skis and start addressing things based on speculation, or what could happen, or what might happen. I don't think, by the way, Commissioner Larkin, who I don't consider to be a really serious person, is too out of bounds when he asks the solicitor, hey, don't we already have the ability to go after somebody in terms of arson? That really wouldn't be a disorderly conduct type issue in terms of addressing this particular ordinance. It's not a bad comment. Because it appears that Commissioner Larkin actually reviewed the appropriate statutes and the appropriate comments. Perhaps maybe the same approach with other types of laws that we think may be going into effect, lest we, at that point, start to become inconsistent with the laws, or perhaps even worse off, enacting local legislation that is designed to conflict with it. That's what I'll leave on. I didn't hear anybody tonight say, point of fact, I don't want in Radnor Township, the police, to be investigating these particular types of instances. Or for that matter, moving forward with arrests if this does not, in fact, appear to meet the probable cause standard. And there's a reason for that. You want to defer to the police department insofar as how they investigate crimes that are occurring or things that fall within their purview. So it's appropriate to introduce this ordinance, and thereafter speak to it at length. After John Rice, as is common, having failed to prepare for this meeting, will perhaps go and prepare for another meeting down the line and actually has some substantive information to provide you all with. Perhaps again, when other issues come before this board that are similar and require that level of diligence and seriousness. And incidentally, arrests are serious issues. They really are. There might be, in fact, something in the US Constitution that speaks to that. Sort of forgetting what particular amendment that might be, maybe somebody will recall it. But you may be surprised to know that the US Constitution does speak to that, and Pennsylvania laws speak to that. And perhaps we should, at the local level, be recognizing that those laws run superior to ours, and our local ordinance should not be incompatible with them. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Not seeing anything. I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Passing unanimously. Thank you. Moving to Ordinance 2021-15, introduction amending Chapter 280 of the Radnor Township Code, zoning ordinance to allow rooftop dining throughout the township and to provide for outdoor dining for restaurants with existing non-conforming conditions, and to provide regulations therefor. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
John Rice, are you going to introduce this for us?
I can lead this in. This is an ordinance which the Board generated the end of last year. It's gone through a couple of different reviews. And the idea of the ordinance was to provide for rooftop dining throughout the township, in all zoning districts. You had a hotel rooftop dining ordinance, you also had a WBOD rooftop dining ordinance. This would have expanded that. The other part of this is outdoor dining, which in the original draft that came from the Board, brought the decision on that back to the Board, but there was no hearing mechanism in that original ordinance. So what Kevin and I did, Kevin and I did in reviewing this is we added a conditional use standards, which is in paragraph G of the ordinance. So if rooftop dining is unavailable, then outdoor dining would be available, provided that the applicant came before the Board and secured conditional use approval. That would involve advertising a hearing, having a court reporter, and going through the process. At the time, the Board wanted some more control over outdoor dining, particularly in areas where it wasn't permitted. So that's the, the object of the ordinance as it sits. It hasn't been reviewed by the Planning Commission, neither the Township or the County Planning Commission at this point. If the Board introduces this, it's still going to have to be reviewed by both Planning Commissions.
Thank you. Is there commissioner comment on this?
So when this last came in front of us, I think that the consensus on the Board was that we wanted to wait until the comprehensive plan was passed in order to relook at this issue. At the moment, there's two years worth of, I guess, a year and a half left of outdoor dining under the COVID extension that we granted all of our restaurants and the entirety of the Township. There's just not the pressing need to deal with this now. I want to be careful not to create a precedent internally to this Board. I feel strongly that we should not let, as we just heard, the perfect become the enemy of the good. We're not going to have a new comprehensive plan for a long time. And if there were a pressing issue, I would say we should address it immediately. And if we have to clean it up later on, by all means, let's do it. But this is not really a pressing issue at this point. So I'm going to move to table, and we can look at this ordinance in particular or other iterations of it, once we come back to the comprehensive plan.
I would like to speak to it before you table it. I mean, that's, it's just wrong.
No, I have a, I have a motion to table. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
A vote on tabling. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have tabled the issue. Till after the comprehensive planning is what I'm...
Till for two years? Two years, this is just-
So Sean, I-
This is tabled for two years?
I have asked you to be a part of comprehensive planning specifically for this issue. We spoke about that. This is something that's very important to you. I wanted you to have a voice. I wanted you to be at the table.
All right, that's fine.
And I wanted you to be a champion.
That's fine, thank you. That's fine, thank you. I appreciate that, Margaret.
Okay, moving on to reports of Board liaisons. Is there a report from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, hi. I was going to bring this up in new business anyway, so, but it's more suitable here. So I'm the liaison to the Board of Health. And in a timely fashion, after this last weekend's heat wave, we, on, the Board of Health and I, are concerned about the predictions that this is going to be an extremely hot summer. Presumably with climate change, it's only going to get more so over time. And the Township has enacted some good things, the Clean Energy Plan in 2020. We've got the Sustainability Coordinator working with EAC. But we wanted to see if we could really firm up some plans to help vulnerable elderly constituents, vulnerable and elderly constituents this summer in the Township. With practical things. We're talking about fan distribution, which currently is done through Delaware County, or it was last year. Their website has still got the 2021 data on it. So I'm assuming that they're going to be doing it again this year, but I'm not positive. But the numbers and whatnot for folks to call if they do need a fan, if it's the same as last year or there. You know, the promotion of hydration without alcohol and caffeine, the promotion of loose-fitting clothes, light colors if outdoors, shade, cool showers, spritzers. But I think what the Township could provide would be emergency cooling centers. I know the Wayne Senior Center probably would provide some, but we here at the Township building potentially could do so as well. And maybe some gyms, some larger air-conditioned structures. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm happy to work with whoever wants to work on this and see if we just can't firm up some plans and some recommendations to have on the website with easily available numbers to call for help, that kind of thing. And last little thing is that people shouldn't forget about their pets. It's not just about people, but, you know, if you can't touch the sidewalk or the asphalt, your pet should not be walking on it, so.
Thank you. Are there other reports?
Yeah. So I would actually just like to thank Tammy Cohen for everything that she's done. I know she's not here tonight, but we had Wheels of Wayne, which was very successful, as well as the Emmeltonell, the unveiling of the banner. And she, she worked, she's worked tirelessly on both. And to me, that is a, that's a lot. It's a lot that she's doing. And those were two wonderful, wonderful events. So thank you, Tammy. Thanks for everyone that came out to both events. Also, the Radnor Day Camp, they are desperately, I hear at this point, looking for teens and counselors. So if you have a teen that needs, I think, 14 or 15 or so, that is looking for a fun summer job, and they may live close to one of those parks, please get ahold of our Parks and Rec, or they can email me, and I will forward that on to get them the, to the appropriate department. So, yeah, so a lot of fun things that have happened and will be happening with the Township.
Any other reports?
Just real quickly, Radnor Memorial Library that I'm a liaison to is asking for commissioners and for the Township to perhaps put up a survey. It's a community survey, just to ask how they're doing. And it's an opportunity for the community to provide feedback and give, you know, information about how they can create more accessibility to their library. So when I have the survey, I will circulate, and if you'd like to share it with your constituents, that would be great. And I'll send it to, to our communications person as well.
And is the, do you happen to know, is there a timeline for the, like, how long are they going to keep the survey open for people to participate?
I'll find out, but it'll probably be available in June.
Great, thank you. Others? Okay, moving on to new business. Any new business from the commissioners? How about old business?
You have old business. So this is to John Rice. John, you drafted the re, or you re-institutioned or redrafted that ordinance on a rooftop dining, is that correct?
Yes, Kevin and I both worked on it, yeah.
About how many hours did it take you to do?
Oh, boy. Sean, off the top of my head-
Five, two, one?
I would say probably two or three hours.
Two or three hours, okay.
Sure.
Okay, so your time and Kevin's time?
That includes back and forth talking to Kevin, you know, reviewing some drafts that he had done.
Okay, cool. And, and it took a fair amount of time back a while when you drafted the outdoor dining in Garrett Hill, which this Board asked you to do, as well as the increase in height, correct? That took some time?
I worked on that, yeah.
You worked on that, okay. So this is just, everyone here, it's just a waste of the taxpayers' money. Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, I'd like to call for final public participation.
Hi, Anna Marie Hesman, Old Oaks Neighborhood in Rosemont. I've been wanting for a little while to get back here, but been a kind of crazy couple of years. I want to congratulate you on a lot of the improvements on the new website. There are some handy- There are some handy features, especially the video of the meeting where you can actually choose the segment and the agenda. It's like a lot less torturous to go find the segment of a meeting. So whoever's brainchild that was, thank you. But I want to talk today briefly about something near and dear to my heart, which is accessibility. We spent a truckload of taxpayer money on accessibility over the last couple of years on a very worthy project, which is great, but benefited only a small segment of people needing accommodation for a very specific venue. And the township's new website no longer even has an accessibility statement on the bottom of it. I was just looking around to see if I could find it. Let me know if I just couldn't find it. I was always a little disappointed that the accessibility portion of the website only talked about ways in which the website was accessible. A township such as Radnor with the resources it has, it'd be great if we have on the township staff someone who is a point of contact for people needing accommodation in some way in the township, first and foremost. So like, I mean, in a lot of organizations, you have an accessibility officer or something like that. But I understand that probably in Radnor, at least at the beginning, it would be part of someone's job. Maybe it is part of someone's job and just not advertised on the website as like, please reach out to this person if you have an injury or some other sort of limitation that's making it really hard for you to utilize township services, or there's been a program introduced and it has limitations for you. So for example, I have high-frequency hearing loss, and it makes me crazy that we don't have closed captioning, real closed captioning, not automated transcripts, which are sometimes a little kooky. And I've had it for decades. So, you know, it's like, I rely on that to help me understand things. And when people utilize microphones ineffectively, it affects my ability to consume these meetings or any of the other township meetings on television or on YouTube or something like that, because people turn their head and they suddenly, they suddenly start talking to someone else, and they're like, okay, the rest of that sentence just went away. And that's a lot worse when you have some sort of a hearing problem. That's a personal example. But if you take something like the parking app, okay, we just decided to replace parking meters with an app. Take someone who's 70, 80, 90, maybe they can't work a smartphone, and they can only walk this fast. And suddenly, instead of putting a quarter in a meter and walking 10 feet, they have to walk 20 feet or, you know, they have to walk significantly longer to get to an actual kiosk that they can try and figure out how to use, whereas they used to be able to just put a single quarter in a meter and go straight ahead. So that's just an example of a project where there's huge impact for someone to have access to a service. And it's not about ADA compliance, it's about inclusion of people within our community. I won't even get started on sidewalks because that's a longer thing about pedestrian safety. I'll come back another night. But just wanted to ask you to give a little thought as to how our township is communicating and thinking about accessibility in our projects. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Just wanted to see if anyone else was going to go first. Dan Sherry, Wayne. Find my comments to what was discussed and introduced earlier tonight, the introduction of the resolution, that attempts to prophylactically circumvent that which might be coming from the U.S. Supreme Court and the Pennsylvania Legislature. But I'd like to use some of the commentary tonight that was made by certain members on this board for purposes of my final comments. And I'd like to first start with an acknowledgement that Commissioner Farre made a point tonight that I thought was appropriate, and that was talking about injection sites and in so doing discussing, at least in passing, how he appeared to feel about the topic of drug abuse. And I don't think I misrepresent your views, Commissioner Farre, when I think that you believe, as I believe, that when it comes to nonviolent drug offenders, really, treatment is more important than prosecution. It doesn't change the fact that when we have federal laws and we have state laws, we should not be encouraging our local police departments to act in a way that is incompatible with those laws by not participating, which is part of the language in the proposed ordinance as introduced. I also wanted to speak to you, Commissioner Jones. I hope I don't misrepresent what I was gleaning from your comments, where you certainly do believe that Roe v. Wade is a serious matter, as do I. It appears that you were being circumspect and guarded, I believe appropriately, as to whether or not this Board of Commissioners should be getting involved in this very important healthcare issue at a local level. And that leads me to you, Commissioner Myers. I've never had the opportunity to speak directly to you before. I took a look at your biography when you brought up tonight that you have a medicine background. And you were being, I think, appropriately modest when you were talking about your background. Having a look at your township biography, you were in a director capacity at CHOP. That's incredibly impressive. And to that end, I don't want it to come across as me merely complimenting you when I say I wouldn't dare try to lecture you on medicine. Never. It'd be hubris for me to do that. I am a personal injury lawyer. If I have a critique in terms of what you think about medicine, I would bring in experts who are similarly situated as you and get from them the information that would either support my critique or change my mind. And I submit to you that having your mind changed is one of the greater experiences a person can have in life. And that goes to the Seventh Ward Representative. When Commissioner Farre first got onto this board, he is the most senior member of this board right now, you can simply look at the YouTube videos in terms of how I interacted with him. To say that it was vituperative would be putting that mildly. But one thing he's demonstrated on this board is a commitment to having people get their say and to make sure that the business before this board is the business of this board. Okay? He's been consistent in that regard. And to that end, I would urge you to consider having your minds changed, not by listening to me or other people up on this board, but by consulting with experts, to the extent you have not done so already, on constitutional law and people who feel strongly in favor of Roe and what Roe v. Wade stands for and what potentially can happen if Roe v. Wade starts being legislated at the local level. What that can do to the underlying precepts of Roe. Think about again what Roe guarantees. It's a constitutional guarantee, meaning if a woman is in Delaware County or Chester County or Carman County or some of the more conservative counties in Pennsylvania, her constitutional rights remain the same. That should certainly, thanks, that should certainly be the situation, one would think, within a county itself in Pennsylvania. And what can happen if we start attempting to do this before, again, we even have the law from the U.S. Supreme Court or the law as enacted by a Pennsylvania Legislature and not vetoed by presumably a Republican governor down the line? Why are we doing this beforehand rather than carefully analyzing and deciding, are we doing something that has a worthwhile shot at being upheld? Or are we perhaps undercutting the very legal concept that we purport to be supporting? Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? I'm not seeing any. I'm going to move for adjournment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.